Thank you everybody and welcome to the City Commission Meeting. This is June 21st, 2022. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate what a wonderful looking crowd we have tonight. So for those of you who are here for the first time, my name is Dean Trantallis, the Mayor of our city. These are our members of the Commission, Commissioner Moritas and Commissioner Glassman. The other two will certainly be on their way. Don't say anything, but it's the Vice Mayor's birthday, so we were wishing him a happy birthday upstairs. So the way we do it is we begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we have presentations. Tonight, there are just a couple of presentations in which we recognize people, individual organizations or events that are important to the people in our community. So before we begin those presentations, I would ask that all of us could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you. I'd like to recognize that we have a celebrity representative in our audience tonight. We have Representative Chip Lamarcas. Thank you for being here. He'll be speaking on something shortly, and I just want to recognize you. Anybody else, the President, Vice President? No, they're not here tonight? Okay.
Governor.
Governor, no. So, tonight, just a couple of, actually, the no agenda announcements, no changes to the agenda. So can I hear a motion to approve the minutes in the agenda for this?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Could we just do the roll call first?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I thought we did that. Okay. All right, let's do a roll for attendance, yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Here.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Not present at the moment.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Not present at the moment.
And I am here. Okay. Now, we have a motion and a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie is not present. Vice Mayor Sorensen is not present. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mr. Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantallis?
Yes. So the minutes and the agenda are now approved. We'll begin by the first presentation. Commissioner Moritas is here to present a District One Community Appearance WOW Award. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, I believe Greg, City Manager, I think Chris and I discussed this. Are we going to allow Representative Lamarcas to give a few remarks first? Did we put that item first?
We won't be that long. Can you stay here for a few more minutes? Yeah, he's fine.
Okay. Well, we pulled it off of the consent and we put it as a regular item.
I thought before we go through the consent items, he can speak before we get to it.
Before the consent? Okay, so I'll do the wow now. All right. Super. Let's see.
Besides, I know he wants to hear our presentations tonight.
How these people.
How are you? Good to see you all. It's on. Good to see you all. David? Okay, are you 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 David? Okay, are you? We should be dancing for that. That was good. Can I do it again?
If you get Commissioner Moritas' new CD out the door, just for $25.
I hope no one's... I gotta download that one. All right, David, welcome. And is Robert here as well?
No.
Okay, so, well, I'd like to issue this award, of this WOW Award, on behalf of the City Commission, on all the improvements you've done for your beautiful home. Are we going to show the photos? Here we go. All right. So you definitely had a before and after, and we are so thankful. So I'm going to read a few things, some of the improvements that you've done in Imperial Point. Okay. So David and Robert are the visionaries behind the property located at 2176 Northeast 63rd Street in Imperial Point. They were excited to join the Imperial Point neighborhood and wanted their new home to reflect the welcoming environment that permeates the community. David and Robert desired some privacy for their corner, but felt a hardscape would clash with the seamless continuity of the neighborhood as a whole. A completely revamped landscape would accomplish their dual objective. From a sparse and bare footprint, the duo fashioned a lush, welcoming and vibrant Florida landscape with an assortment of complimentary plant textures, growth direction and colors. The updated landscaping includes a variety of palms from Christmas to robalini and an assortment, look at that, isn't that beautiful? Assortment of crotons, blue iris and jasmine provide a splash of color. Red candles add depth and direction and four stunning Japanese blueberry trees that beautifully offer the natural privacy barrier they sought. Complementing this voyage is a mixture of decorative gray and white stones paired with water feature consisting of a bubbling slate urn that perfectly marries the landscape with the living quarters. The updates complement the neighborhood, increase the curb appeal, making this WOW property a breathtaking must-see. So Fort Lauderdale City Commission and the Community Appearance Board proudly present this WOW Award to David and Robert and thank them for enhancing the Imperial Point neighborhood. And the City of Fort Lauderdale, we're honored to present you with a gift certificate of appreciation from the Commission, a gift certificate to Blue Moon Fish Company, and an orchid from the fresh market, and a signed place on your front yard to celebrate this recognition. And, Miss, yes. Thank you. And thank you, thank you, Elka, for representing the Community Appearance Board and coming here and presenting this award and the beautiful orchid and the gifts, and thank you for the work you do for our city on behalf of the board. So congratulations and welcome to Imperial Point in District One.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Sure.
All right, say a few words.
I'll just be very brief. On behalf of Robert, who couldn't be here, my husband and myself, we're very proud to be homeowners in Imperial Point and very proud to get this award during Pride Month. So thank you so much.
All right, great. Put it in your lawn. Want to take a picture? Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Congratulations. Thank you, Commissioner. Is John Caspero here? There you are. Hi, John. So the CAPEW 2022 Partner Report is being presented by John Caspero, president of Learning for Success. Is Tralisha Smith? Oh, there she is.
I'm here.
Look, Tralisha.
Good evening. I wanted to, Mr. Caspero, I've been discussing the wonderful work that you've done with the kids and the community in education. Incorporated on June 21st, 2002, Learning for Success manages a network of South Florida business and community volunteers and educators who implement the kids and the power of work known as the CAPEW program. And my future is now in the firing programs under the direction and president of John Caspero. These programs bring volunteers into schools to help students connect school and work and bring students into this workspace for real-life experiences. In 1993, Mr. Caspero initiated the program with one school and one business for 250 students. The program now serves over 8,000 students annually in eight South Florida elementary, middle and high schools. More than 600 community volunteers and 350 educators participate in this program. Mr. Caspero, please come.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission and Mr. Assistant City Manager, thank you for having, for the opportunity to be here this evening in support. We want to recognize the City of Fort Lauderdale's incredible support for our organization, Learning for Success, and our Kids in the Power of Work program. Again, the program brings business and community volunteers into elementary, middle and high schools, and students into the workplace to expose them to the world of work and the skills necessary to be a success in working life. Were you going to start? Okay. Okay, so, so these are the schools that we're, we've been working with. These are the list of volunteers that participated. And this year, Carrie Arthur's, your HR Administrator and Administrative Supervisor, won our Learning for Success Coordinator of the Year Award. She recruited more than 90 employees from 12 different city departments to volunteer in six city schools and interact with 360 students from these schools at a career fair she produced at the city's Carter Park, an event that has been bigger and better each year. That, that field trip started in 2010, so it's been going on for 12 years and getting bigger and better every year. Not only did Carrie organize all this and recruit all the volunteers, but she volunteered herself in one of the schools, in Florinada Elementary. So Carrie, please come and say a few words.
Mayor, Commissioner, good evening, everyone. Well, all I can say is I'm honored to be the recipient for Volunteer Coordinator of the Year. I was very pleasantly surprised, and I just want to thank everyone from Learning for Success for they're very good to work with, they have a very good team, and also all our principals and volunteers, and also my HR team, who made that field trip so awesome. They really like to do this field trip for the kids. So we want to make it bigger and better and keep moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We also want to recognize, and we did, with special awards to Commissioner Moritas, Commissioner Glassman and Assistant City Manager Greg Chivaria. Each of those did what we call special presentations at different schools. They were Florinada Elementary, Sunrise Middle and William Dandy Middle School. Would any of you, Commissioner Glassman or Commissioner Moritas, like to comment on your experience?
After you.
Okay, well, thank you. It was, well, thank you for inviting us in the first place. I think we all love to be with our students, and I went to Florinada Elementary as well, which is in District One, and I did a mock commission meeting. So we, they, I had commissioners and the mayor, and we went through a whole script and voted on a project, and it was a lot of fun. So thank you.
Thank you, John. So did you bring your plaque with you, Commissioner?
I didn't have my plaque. Oh, I have it now. I thought you meant...
You have to hold that up.
Yes, we're going to take a photo at the end.
We're going to take a photo. Okay. So, yes, thank you, John, and to your entire team. I had the distinct pleasure of speaking with 400 eighth graders 20 minutes before dismissal time, so they were very attentive. It was really great. They just hung on every word. It was really, it was really quite amazing. I think they really did enjoy the talk because they looked very excited to be there in the cafeteria. All kidding aside, it always is a pleasure, as you probably know, Vice Mayor Sorensen, Commissioner Moritas and I have been teachers in a, in a past lifetime. And I, myself, for almost two decades. So there is nothing more important than educating our children and giving them every opportunity for success in life. So I want to thank you for your team, and thank you for thinking of us, and it was really a pleasure to be at Sunrise Middle. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, and we hope that this will be continued. We can, we can have Commissioner Sorensen join us as well this coming, coming school year. What we didn't show you is a very brief video of the career fair. AV guys, can you, oh, I see. Very brief.
Today, we try to have like a mini career fair, but we make it kid-friendly and fun.
My favorite station was the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport because I love their, like, foam planes that they had, and they were so kind.
They get giveaways, they do fun things. It's a fun day away from school, but they also learn in the process. It's great to see everybody engaged, and the kids are actually touching apparatus, having conversations and asking questions. So that engagement is very good, and they're learning about what we do on a daily basis to serve them and their families in the community. We have a lot of bells and whistles for them to look at. Fire, police, the dogs, the horses, the motorcycles. What kid wouldn't like to see that?
Beautiful job they did. But thank you again for your continued support. We'd like to conclude just with, if we could get a photo of the commissioners with your awards and, and up front. And Carrie and her volunteer, one of her volunteers has come as well. Thank you, folks, for your volunteerism. You certainly make Fort Lauderdale a better place for everybody. So at this point, we have now what's called the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is an opportunity for the Committee, for the Commission to vote on a number of items all at once without taking up each individual item. Any member of the Commission is permitted to pull a Consent Agenda item if they want to speak on it separately and vote on it separately. So Commissioner Moritas, do you have any Consent Agenda items you'd like to pull?
Well, I guess just to make sure we cover it, so CR5.
CR5.
P R A C, Memorial Drive.
Okay. Is that the one that?
Yeah, it's on the, I'm just, yes.
Say it again.
It was, it's on consent in front of us, but maybe it's somewhere else, but I'm just pulling it just in case the somewhere else doesn't exist.
Wait a minute.
Well, I discussed it with Chris.
Is that the one that Commissioner?
We're going to, with Representative Lamarcas.
Is he going to speak on that? We don't have to pull it. He can speak before.
Okay.
We can just vote.
I want to, well, I want to bring a few people up, too.
Okay, all right.
So I'm pulling it. We're going to come up.
CR5, and Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any items you'd like to push, pull?
I want to pull this one back because I don't want to see Chip Lamarcas come up to the podium today.
So you want to undo CR5?
I want to undo Chip Lamarcas.
Commissioner Glassman? Yes, I'll put CR5 back on pulling from the consent, so we will hear from Representative Lamarcas. And I have no other, no other pulls, thank you.
And Vice Mayor?
Nothing, thanks, Mayor.
Okay. So, so except for CR5, all the other Consent Agenda items will remain on the agenda, and if there's a person who wishes to speak on any Consent Agenda item, I see that there are a few. CM1 and CR4, and I will, and I will call you up in a moment. Well, CR4, you only want to speak if you don't really need to speak. Where's Willie? Where are you? There you are. Do you want to speak on it? No one pulled it, so it's just going to be passed. Did you want to speak on it? Well, I'm going to ask you to get up now. I'm just saying, do you want to, do you still need to speak on it?
I do not need to speak.
Okay. And how about?
You win. You're good to go.
Good answer. Don't say anything.
And CM1, Frank, are you here? Did you, okay. All right. So, so Representative Lamarcas, would you please like to come up and speak with regard to CR5? And CR5 is a resolution, excuse me.
Let's go Cowboys.
Yeah, hold on a second. It's a resolution supporting the Florida Legislature's honorary designation of State Road A1A between the northern terminus and the southern terminus of Galt Ocean Mile to be known as P O Erasi Memorial Drive. Commissioner Lamarcas, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the promotion twice to, back to County Commissioner. First, I want to wish on Friday, Vice Mayor, a happy 44th birthday. The, the day will be celebrated by all, it's Friday. So, Mayor, I came tonight, I know this is a resolution that Commissioner Moritas was gracious to get on this agenda before you all break or, you know, so we can get this in motion, but just to give a little background to it, we all know the body of work that P R A C gave to the Galt Mile and the City of Fort Lauderdale. And this year, we typically have road, road and bridge designation bills in Tallahassee. I was able to get a, run a bill and get it on to that transportation bill to rename the north, to put a sign at the north end of Galt, Galt Drive, I'm sorry, A1A on Galt Ocean Mile, and then the south end at Oakland Park, it will be designated as P O Erasi Memorial Drive. And the DOT, once you approve this resolution, you guys do a ton of resolutions, this one I really support. And so once this is, this is passed, it'll get a, it's signs made, and then we can, can dedicate the, that section of A1A. And I know that P O's wife Lisa and his son Daniel are here, and I wanted to thank them for all of their, their sacrifice throughout the years, and really, that's, that's all to say, and appreciate that, that you all are giving your public service and what you do for the City of Fort Lauderdale.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, Representative Lamarcas. And can I ask Lisa and Daniel and Fred, y'all just to come up? I'd love to get a picture, too.
Fred's also asked to speak, so I was going to...
Fred wants to speak? Okay, go ahead, Fred.
I was going to call him next. Fred Nesbit?
Don't speak, Fred.
Good evening. My name is Fred Nesbit. I'm the president of the Galt Mile Community Association, and I just want to publicly thank Representative Lamarcas, Commissioner Moritas, and certainly the Commission for taking up this item tonight. P O was an advocate not only of the Galt Mile community, but he was also an advocate of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County and the state of Florida. We miss him very much, and this is one way of honoring and recognizing his 20-plus years of service to not only the Galt Mile, but to the City of Fort Lauderdale. And we're very happy that Lisa, his wife, is here with us, and Daniel. And again, thank you, Commissioner Moritas.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this item? Okay.
I don't think so. And thank you, Commissioner, we're going to vote on this next, obviously, but, and thank you, Representative Lamarcas, for coming today and for getting this done in honor of P O.
Chip?
So, do I hear a motion to approve CR5?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Okay. So moved and seconded.
Want to do it as the whole consent? We didn't do, we didn't vote on the consent.
Well, let's just do it separately.
She pulled it.
She pulled it.
Since it's been pulled.
Pulled and removed and pulled.
A resolution of the City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, supporting the honorary designation of that portion of State Road A1A between the northern terminus and southern terminus of Galt Ocean Drive in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, as P-O-I-R-A-C-E Memorial Drive and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mr. Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and CR-5 is now approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the rest of the Consent Agenda items?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mr. Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and all the rest of the Consent Agenda items are now approved. If any or all of you came here tonight as a result of one of the Consent Agenda items, your item is now approved. You're welcome to stay through the rest of the meeting or any part thereof, or you may, you're also welcome to leave if you'd like. But thank you very much for being here tonight, and we thank you for your participation in our, in our community. The next item is M-1, motion approving an event agreement and extended road closure beyond 10:00 AM on the Barrier Island for Hanukkah Fair on La Solis on Christmas Day. Was that actually in the title?
Okay.
No, I mentioned, I just.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see that in the title, but thank you.
I'm not quite sure I understand what the item is, since there doesn't seem to be any reference to 10:00 AM on the backup. I saw, I saw 10:00 PM for, for, for music. What's the 10:00 AM thing about? Why, what is, what's going on before 10:00?
Well, there's setup, it says.
Is it a road race? What's going on?
It says setup.
Yeah, but I mean, why do they have, what's going to happen? Explain to me what this item is about. Our staff, can you explain to me what the staff is about?
Enrique.
Enrique?
Good evening, everyone. Enrique Sanchez Parks is Deputy Director. So the, the item is, I believe, they need authorization from you guys to keep the road closed past 10:00 AM.
So this is for the whole day, is it not?
No, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the, it's the.
Till 5:00 PM.
It's, yeah, but I mean, it's for the, it's basically for the whole day.
Yes.
Not for just like an hour or so. It's a celebration road we have between.
Exactly, between Seabreeze and.
Right, and we close that all the time.
Yeah.
So.
But it needs approval.
Yeah, that's all it is.
It's not a consent item.
It's from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Sunday, December 25th.
Okay. Someone like to move the item?
I would love to.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions regarding this? There being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. Can I just make a suggestion? Somehow, I just think that the, the procedure seems a little confusing because usually when we have road closures after 10:00 AM, we're talking about A1A and Seabreeze because of marathons and things like this. It just seems like that road closure was never really contemplated as a pathway for vehicular traffic in the normal course. And somehow, I thought that, you know, somehow I thought that it would be better phrased if we, if we made it understood that it isn't simply just to extend an event for an hour or so, like usually a marathon is, but we wanted, we want to actually close it for the, the whole period. I just think that maybe we should phrase it a little bit differently, because I got a few questions asked of me on that, and, and I told them it's for the whole day till 5:00 PM, so, all right.
Or also, Mayor, you know, I think when that street was designed between Seabreeze and A1A.
To be closed.
It was, it was designed as a festival street.
Yeah, it's a festival.
So maybe we need just a little bit more clarification, because, correct me if I'm wrong, it's classified as a festival street. So maybe, maybe you're right, maybe it just needs a little bit more clarification on that.
Right, so that's a little easier to understand. Okay. M-2, motion approving an event agreement and request for music exemption for the 11th Annual Brazilian Festival. Is anyone here on that? Yes, sir. Come on up. Come on up. Our friend here, you're going to have, you're going to have a great event this year?
I hope so, Your Honor.
Which you always. Does anyone have any questions? And would someone like to move the item?
What's, hold on. Good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Glad you're here, glad you're ready for another one.
I just wanted to say again, thank you for all of you, and the mayor especially, and everybody for giving us a chance to do something in 2020. And we did something really safe, sir. Thanks for having us again in 2021, and thanks for letting us keep this alive. And we want to stay here for as long as you guys allow us to stay.
Yep, no, I appreciate it. What has, Greg, what's the normal amplified music time allowance?
I'm going to ask Anthony to assist with that. I believe it's till 10 o'clock. Right.
Yeah, or Carl, or, I mean, Enrique, if you want. 10:00 PM, that's. Yeah.
Yeah, so normally, it's 10:00 PM. After that, the Commission has to approve.
Okay, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday is normally 10:00 PM for Snyder Park?
For amplified music, yeah.
For amplified music.
Amplified music, okay. So that's just my, my one concern is, could we, could we stop at 10? Tell me what you're thinking, yeah.
Sir, on Friday?
Yep.
We will have a fast voice, just a sound check.
Right.
And then, I don't know if you, you have been there.
Yep.
We're going to be, we're going to be placing the line array.
Yep.
Towards the airport.
Yep.
595.
Yep.
And the line array that we use is, is, it's extremely, you can trust on that.
Yep.
Because we did the first year of the festival, I don't know if you remember, we did in 2020 at the High Sena Park.
Right, that's why, yeah.
And we had all these buildings around us.
Right.
And we did the best we could to keep the volume down.
Yep.
And, and we did what we could.
Right.
I don't, I don't think there was complaint. This year, the, the Snyder Park, this one additional hour, 11 o'clock. Give us a chance, if we have any delays in acts.
Yep.
To extend the service a little bit later.
Okay.
We stop selling beverage.
Yep.
We're going to stop at 10:30.
Okay.
And, and then after 10:30, we're going to bring it down. I can promise you, we're not going to do anything to cause any problems to anyone. I promise you that.
Yep, no, I appreciate it. Where were, in 2021, where were you? Was it?
Beach.
Beach, okay. And how did that, did that go well? Was it, we were good with?
Yeah, in fact, everyone is feeling bad that they left us.
Yeah.
At the La Solis Oceanside Park.
Yeah.
No, no goodbye letter, nothing, not a.
No, we got a.
Not a, not a, it was nice to know you.
They'll be back, they'll be back.
No, thank you for your hospitality. Nothing.
They had to catch a plane back to Brazil.
Huh?
Had to catch a plane to live back.
Right, nothing, nothing, absolutely nothing.
We're going to be back February for the carnival.
Just, just we're gone.
We're going to be back February if the mayor allows us to be back with the carnival.
Okay, nice.
And the good thing is, Sunday, the next day is a holiday anyways, Columbus Day, right? You have, you have, you have the date and time to be Saturday and Sunday at 11:00 PM, but Monday is a holiday anyway, it's not like a workday, so.
Yes, I, I don't know about the holiday.
Yeah, so that you don't.
That's good news.
That's better for you.
So let's, let's do this, if you could. Let's, let's aim for the sound check, let's, let's try to end by 10:00 PM.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on Friday, let's end by 10:00 PM of that. Saturday and Sunday, if you can try to start shutting it down, the music down by 10:30-ish, all right, and then.
And 11 o'clock, we shut everything down.
Yeah, yeah, so just, yeah.
Because 10:30, we start to tell people, hey, it's time to go.
Right, yep, okay. Great, and then you'll just be available if we have any issues and.
Always, always with Joe.
Yeah, no, you're always great. Enrique, is that, yeah, good? Feeling good? Okay. Yep, yep, perfect, okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations on your.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
And thank you, and thank you for bringing the Brazilian Festival to Fort Lauderdale once again.
Thanks for having us.
Everyone enjoys it.
God bless you, sir.
Thank you.
So is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll, yeah, I'll move it if that's all.
Mayor, a second?
Thank you. Second.
So moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the item is approved, good luck with it.
Thank you, thank you.
R-1, appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names?
Yes, for the items on the resolution this evening, Charter Revision Board, Gina Ellis, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Community Appearance Board, Siran Der Bedrosian, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, and Theatres Palamito, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Economic Development Advisory Board, Russ Klenett, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Education Advisory Board, Carlos Lang, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorensen. Noise Control Advisory Committee, William Brown, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Parks Recreation Beach Board, Edon Eckstein, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. And Sustainability Advisory Board, Luis Castillo Olivera, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. And we also got a few names late, and if we could add these on, I'll read them and we'll do it as amended. For consensus for Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Robin Vegas, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorensen. Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Leanne Barber, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Community Appearance Board, Jack Placotares, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. General Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, Robert McComsey, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Parks Recreation and Beaches Board, Brett Patterson, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. And Sustainability Advisory Board, nominated by, I'm sorry, Sophia Thornton, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. And that rounds, rounds it out.
Okay, would someone like to introduce the resolution as amended?
Introduce.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part here of. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mr. Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and those appointments are now made, and I want to thank those folks who volunteered to be on those boards or committees. Thank you for your volunteerism and helping to make Fort Lauderdale the great city that it continues to be. Moving on to R-2 and R-3, I understand there's a request to defer. Is there a date certain?
July 5th.
We received notification this morning for July 5th, the mayor.
July 5th, so it'll take one at a time. There is a request to defer R-2 to July 5th. Do I hear a motion to defer?
Move to defer.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mr. Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R-2 is now deferred to July 5th. R-3, also motion to defer. Do I hear a motion to defer?
Move to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R-3, yes, and R-3 is now deferred to July 5th. Now we're on to R-4. We have a number of people have signed up to speak. This is a quasi judicial de novo hearing, consideration of a resolution for site plan level three application, waterway use, modification of required yards, seven-unit multifamily residential development Lumiere 500 Hendrix Isle. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. So just to bring everybody up to date on this, the City Commission agreed to consider a de novo hearing with regard to this, to this particular site plan application. In the interim, the city attorney has indicated to us, and maybe you can repeat to us again your opinion, that the City Commission may be precluded from hearing this de novo hearing because of a statute that indicates that this process should have taken place within 180 days, 180 days from the initial application submission. I have, I have stated to the representative for some of the neighbors, is she here? Where is she? Ah, if you'd like to come up. I have indicated that I would, now, there's a difference of opinion as to whether or not. Hold on just a minute.
I just wanted clarity. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Because I didn't, I didn't think we were doing a de novo hearing. I thought you wanted some questions answered.
Right, so.
So, I mean, I just want to know, are we, is it a hearing?
That's what we're going to, that's what we're going to, that's what we're going to have.
Yeah, but we have a representative up there now, which to me means we're having a hearing.
Well, Ellen Bogdanoff is here on behalf of, well, she'll indicate who she's representing in a moment, but there's a difference of opinion as to whether or not we should be precluded from having a de novo hearing. The city attorney says we, we, we aren't in a position to do it. Ellen Bogdanoff represents a different point of view, and I thought we should give her an opportunity to present the case as to why we should go ahead with the de novo hearing, and then we can decide whether or not we want to go ahead with it.
So when, when Ellen starts, is.
That's not a de novo hearing.
It's not a hearing, okay, I just want to know what we're doing.
It's just that it's an argument whether or not we are, we are eligible to hear a de novo hearing.
So if we decide, yes, we're going to do it, then we come back at a later date?
No, we'll just, the de novo hearing will happen tonight.
Okay, that's one of the rules.
Yep. Ms. Bogdanoff?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll give you 10 minutes.
Thank you. Ellen Bogdanoff, representing the club at Hendrix. And I did issue a memo that I believe all of you received, so I know, you know, brevity is a good thing in these meetings, so I don't want to necessarily repeat anything, but I think the premise of the memorandum is.
Well, assuming we did not read the memorandum...
Okay, you want me to go through that?
Spell it out.
Okay.
The, the public would like to hear it, and also, please tell us who you're representing.
Okay, the, the club at Hendrix, which is, um, the building immediately to the south of 500 Hendrix, which is the development that's in question. Just to kind of clarify, the, the premise of the city, city's memo that said that we are precluded from moving was, uh, the assumption that the city and the attorneys for, or the developer, did not authorize an extension, which the statute is very clear. You can have a reasonable extension, and you do not need necessarily change code. The challenge that we have in this case is that all of your code was written prior to the 2019 statutory change, which said you have to approve or deny in a development order within 180 days of a completed application. Completed application is not defined in statute, and it's not defined in your code. So it's up to the commission to decide, well, what's a completed application? In the memorandum that was written by the city, uh, the assumption was made that there was no knowing and willing extension granted by the developer. I will say that when we requested and we had the call-up, um, I was specifically told by the attorney or the law firm that represents the developer that they've known about this statute, that they've never really pursued the 180 days because they weren't quite sure how the city was going to handle it. And I'm sure you all can realize that you probably have hundreds of applications that have been happening over the last three years that have exceeded the 180 days, but there seems to be some sort of agreement between the city and, you know, the developers that we're just going to get through these applications, and we're not going to violate anybody's due process rights. Because if you cut off, you arbitrarily decide, oh, I really didn't give my permission at this point, number one, one party cannot unilaterally cut off the date. They were operating as if they had the extension. Knowing that the, uh, and by the way, it is reasonable to assume that the law firm and the attorneys knew about this law, simply because when, it's what you do for a living. If you're a CPA, you follow tax law. If you're an attorney and you're land use, you follow development law. So it's not unreasonable to assume that it's consistent with what was said to me that evening, that they knew about the law. Knowing, if you know about the law, you, you are obligated to be candor with, with any tribunal, and that would include the quasi judicial and the city commission, is to say, we were actually operating under an assumption that we had an extension, but when it was called up, it didn't serve their interest, so they're calling the 180 days. I would argue, and the memorandum as it states, is that there was a knowing extension granted not only by the city, because the memo admits that the city granted the extensions and that the developer took months to respond to the comments. Well, I don't think it would be the intent of statute nor this commission to abdicate the clock to the developer, because they could conceivably run out the clock and never give anybody the opportunity to, to, um, to actually call up an item. But let's talk about it in the reverse. Let's say the development order was denied in this case at the commission hearing, which means that you had less than 30 days in order for that section of code to take place, which means that if you deny a development order, it becomes a recommendation by the board. The final action, which has to occur within 180 days, transfers to the commission. You would have never been able to do it, which means you would have denied the developer his due process rights, and that's not the intent. The basis of our argument is, you did have two knowing parties that extended, because they were operating the way they have throughout history over the last three years since 2019, saying, we're just going to get through this process until it's done. You can't call foul when it doesn't work in your best interest. So we believe that there was a legitimate extension. The attorneys for the developer admitted that to me, that they knew about the law. And if you know about the law and you keep plugging away, then that means that you authorized the extension. Both parties did. The second is, is the completed application. The completed application, in order for you all not to abdicate the clock to the developer, should be when it's ripe to go to, it's not defined, so you can define it any way you want. Just because you use the terminology, a completed application, in the code, it was not written to comply with the statutory changes that occurred in 2019, because your completed application was written back in, I think, 1997. So you could create your own definition through dialogue of what is a completed application. And if you want to place equal burden on a developer and the city to move an application along, which was the absolute purpose behind this law, then you would say then when it's ripe for the planning and zoning hearing, that's when you have a completed application, when all the comments are answered and when it's ready to go for a vote. I spoke to the people who were pursuing this legislation, and I also spoke to the cities that were very involved in trying to amend it. It was intentionally vague. I would, I would say at this point, in order for you to clarify, you probably need to update your code, or you need to have an agreement upfront with every developer that you are going to take the process through everybody's completed due process rights. The other, the mem, the only last thing that the memo states is that it would frustrate the purpose of the statute, because you could indefinitely extend based on, um, a call-up or a de novo hearing or an appeal. Well, that's not the case with your code. You, you, you complete it within 90 days, which is what exactly was contemplated by the statute. You already say, no, we're not going to take forever, we're not going to stall you for six months. If you are denied, you're gonna, you're gonna know the answer within 90 days. If you call it up as a commissioner, you as the city as a party to the application have a right to due process rights, which means that you're going to do it within 90 days. So your code actually complies with the spirit and intent of the law. You do it very, very quickly. So those are the, the two issues. I, I do believe the developer provided permission. I don't believe that there was no knowing, um, or not, no knowledge that, uh, they had granted, um, the extension. And that's our position. I respectfully disagree with the city's memorandum and would ask that you continue with the de novo hearing.
Ms. Bogdanoff, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
It's, it's my understanding that this statute was enacted, um, probably with the expectation that they were protecting developers, that they were, um, wanting to make sure that cities were not taking their time in approving or responding to applications for developments, and that they, they put this time limit on cities to make sure that they did their work in a timely fashion. Is that kind of what you're, what you're thinking is? It was meant to help the developer?
Correct. Um, I, I spoke to the League of Cities, and what they said, there were some...
Well, it's hearsay, you know, that's...
Oh, okay, that's fine.
But, but the thing is that, that now we're looking at a situation where you're claiming that the developer is actually gaming the system, where purposely delaying the different levels of approvals in order to let the clock run out and therefore preventing the city commission from taking up a de novo hearing. So it's actually worked against us now in trying to fulfill everyone's due process rights, the commissions as well as the developers. So that's the quagmire we're in. We're seeing that the, that the intent of the statute was for the purpose of protecting developers. Now we see a developer perhaps gaming the system and using it to prevent us from doing what we're supposed to do, which is to protect the rights of, of the public. So, um, so, but I, I hear your argument, and now, Mr. Boalow, do you have anything you'd like to respond?
Yeah, there's quite a bit to cover there from there. Respectfully, I think counsel's argument, you know, avoids or somehow glosses over two very distinct tenants of statutory construction. One is, you know, the courts, we're going to give effect to a statute's plain meaning, and, and we look at the plain meaning of a statute and assume that the legislature meant what it said. Another very important tenant is that statutes are construed to avoid absurd results. And I think when we first, first, and I'll try to take them in order as presented, but the fact that our ordinances were passed prior to the passage of this particular statute is irrelevant. It's not the Florida legislature's duty or responsibility to conform to our existing laws. The fact that our ordinances may be incongruent to the intent or the plain meaning of the ordinance, that's our problem, not the Florida legislature's. With regards to the fact that completeness, I think the plain language of the statute is, is, is very clear, and I'll read it to you...
You don't think it's meant to be vague?
No, because it specifically states that within 30 days after receiving an application for approval of a development permit or development order, a municipality must review the application for completeness. So we're reviewing an application, we're not reviewing the whole process, we're not, I mean, the whole project, we're not reviewing the complete analysis, and then we have to issue a letter indicating that all required information is submitted, or specifying with particularity, any areas that are deficient. That's within 30 days. Clearly, counsel's argument that this completeness is when the entire project has been vetted by DRC and by through staff, and the 180 days starts after that, runs completely contrary to the plain language of this particular, uh, statute. Clearly, completeness, they refer very expressly to the application itself, and that's what we do. Look at the application.
So how, but, but how do we prevent a developer from doing exactly what I just described? Gaming the system?
We don't, and, and again, there's no evidence here that anybody gamed the system, okay? We, we, we did as a matter of course, we've been doing it for years and working with developers to, you know, we want the correct information, we want the project to be the best that it can be. Staff tries to work very hard with the developers. It's up to us to do that. So again, all I can do is counsel with regards to what staff does or does not do, but my recommendations already have been that, and, and not unlike what Ms. Bogdanoff said, if you have a developer come in, within the 30 days, we find deficiencies in the application, and they have a certain amount of time to come back and give us or fulfill those deficiencies in the application. If they need additional time, it needs to toll the 180 days, or they need to agree to a waiver in the 180 days. We need to keep a better eye on the clock. Second to that, and beyond that, that's the practical, very easy thing to do now. What we need to do is look at our code, because one of the issues here is that this is a little unique, because it's a de novo hearing.
Right.
So that, as you know, as an attorney, de novo hearing is, you're starting from scratch. You don't have to defer to the record below. You can have new evidence, it's, it's complete, it's, it's as if P&amp;Z has done nothing. So if the statute is clear that 180 is after the application, the application, not the project, but the application is complete, then you have a separate process here in our ordinances that can throw all that away, and then you start fresh this evening, and you can negate everything that's happened thus far. So we have to do either change our timelines, where we can fit the call-up, the, the call-up procedure within the 180 days, or if that's not achievable because of the nature of the project and the amount of time the developer needs to give us feedback or to work with the developer, where we get an agreement, a, a, a very clear agreement, that they're waiving the 180 days, or that that 180 days is told. Assumptions about what one party may have known and what the other party does, and the fact that they've agreed to some time, is not a knowing waiver of the statutory 180 days, and that's what we're facing here.
All right, so could, so the definition of when an app, application is complete, is that when the application is submitted, or when all the DRC comments are satisfied?
Based on the plain language of the statute that I just read.
Yeah.
They contemplate completeness of the application, which means I'm giving you an application, you gotta fill in one through 10.
Right.
Let's say eight and nine are missing.
Clock it in, where they clock it in, that's...
Well, no.
No?
We look, we look at it.
Yeah.
And let's say you have to have one through 10.
Right.
And eight and nine are missing or they're deficient. Anthony and his group are going to look at it and say, whoa, 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 number eight, you're not telling us what we need to hear.
Right.
We need, we need to hear more of this and more of that. So they have 30 days to go back and give us a resubmission of that application or answer those comments to our satisfaction. Now, if they need more time, that's when we play and say, okay, you want more time, it's going to toll the 180, or you're going to waive the 180. But once we have the information that is required in the application, we provide them notice that their application pushed into our code is complete. Then we start the whole process. Because if you spend, if you spend a year going through DRC and going through everything else to try to get your project to the final point where it's ready to go to P&amp;Z, or if it's site plan level four, come to you, and then you start the 180 days, that runs completely contrary to the plain meaning.
Well, I, I, I think an argument can be made to that effect, but what happens if you say to the guy, you know, eight and nine is not filled in yet, and he comes back on day 179 with eight and nine filled in, and now he, he resubmits his application?
He can't, because you, then you'd start, you, you give him a time certain.
Right.
Which we do now, and if they don't comply with that, then we're just going to start the clock all over again. You're going to have to resubmit everything.
Did, did we do that in this situation?
No, that's, and, and that's the issue here. It's more of application versus the way, we may be able to tweak our, our code to facilitate scheduling of these items for either P&amp;Z or for your call-up or appeal in that case, but again, an appeal is different than, this is not an appeal, this is a de novo, it's completely different. And there may be ways that we can tweak the ordinance to do that, but in the short term, certainly, more accountability for the time taken. If a developer needs an extra 30 days, then that's going to be, that's going to toll the 180 days. It's just we haven't been doing that since 2019, since this has been passed, and that's the solve. But the, the arguments raised, you know, that, to me, they, I, again, respectfully disagree with counsel.
Well, it's a, it's a loosey-goosey statute, as far as I'm concerned. There are so many loopholes, there's so many ways to get around it, there are so many opportunities to, to, you know, reinterpret it, um, I, I, I mean...
Well, it's up to us at that point.
It's up to us to redefine it, right? But we haven't done that yet.
It's up to us to conform to the, the plain language of it and to conform our ordinances, which were passed prior to the passage of this.
Right.
But it's up to us to conform our procedures, our practices, to that new law, and, you know, with regards to, um, our ability to do that, again, it, it may take some amendment of our ordinances, but we're going to try and work with staff to see if we can fit it all in and try to do that. But I think a big part of it is, and, and, you know, I, I can bring any project to, to, as an example, there is a lot of, you know, you take the Eluxin, for example, right? There was a lot of back and forth for a long amount of time, where we tried to work with the developer and make the building better. Those times would be told, and those times would be, uh, added to the 180, so we wouldn't run into this problem. It's just in this case, it wasn't done.
Right. All right, Commissioner Glassman, this is your district. Do you have any thoughts on this?
Yes, it is my district. Thank you.
Yeah, so I...
I have a lot of thoughts. I actually am the person who called this item up for, uh, us to decide whether we're going to have a de novo hearing, um, and we voted to have a de novo hearing, and I think we should move forward with the de novo hearing. I, I think that, I, I've read both, um, city attorney's memo, I've read Senator Bogdanoff's memo, and, you know, good points, I understand the differences. I think that this eventually is not a decision that we're going to make, I have a feeling that this is a decision that the courts will make, um, but I, I'm prepared to move forward with the de novo hearing and, um, see how the commission feels about this project. We have a, a lengthy record from planning and zoning, um, and all of the other backups, so I, I am prepared to move forward with the de novo hearing and, and get that on the record, and then we'll see where the chips fall. That's my feeling.
Okay. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I guess what you're, what you're saying, Commissioner Glassman, is you feel like either way, there, this will be decided in the courts, whether we have a hearing and vote one way or the other, either, both sides will probably take this to the courts if it's not voted in their favor.
So I figure we might as well go on record and decide how we feel with the de novo hearing, hearing the case, and then we make our decision, and we're either going to concur with planning and zoning, or we're going to not concur with planning and zoning.
I would just, oh, I'm sorry. I bet you we're done.
No, and then we have our record, and then we see what happens.
Would that be useful to the courts, or would they even consider our hearing at all, or are they evaluating and analyzing something totally separate?
Well, first, I don't think we necess, I don't think it's a foregone conclusion. I think if you have the de novo hearing, there are two instances you get to court. If you have a de novo hearing and the project fails, you're going to be in court. If you have a de novo hearing and it's approved, you're not going to be in court. Frankly, I think Ms. Bogdanoff's clients have standing, but, you know, we can argue about that, but it's not going to be on surcery, they can maybe do, uh, uh, an original action on the 163, but that's risky, because if they don't prevail, then they pay our attorney's fees. So I don't think it's a foregone conclusion we end up in court if either we don't have the de novo, or if we do have the de novo but somehow it gets approved, I think we're fine. It's if you have the de novo and it's denied, that's where we get to court.
Commissioner McKenzie, you have any thoughts on this?
I defer to District Commissioner.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I defer to, defer to Commissioner Glassman.
Okay, so Commissioner Glassman, do you want to make a motion? Do you want us to move forward on this?
Is that what's in front of us, or just, do we have to have a motion to move? We have an agenda to have the de novo hearing, so we...
I know, um, so it's, all right, maybe, maybe it shouldn't be done by way of a motion.
Do you think we should hear from Mr. Shine, or does he not have anything to say right now?
He's a party to this, so...
Mr. Shine, do you want to add to...
There's two parties, the city and Mr. Shine.
Maybe help us understand, or, maybe not.
Do you have any additional comments you'd like to make with regard to the argument as to whether or not, um, this commission is precluded from having a de novo hearing this evening?
Yes, Mayor, and I'll make it extremely brief.
It's okay. Take your time.
We're just going to look at the statute, just to, I, I feel like we haven't really looked at it, judging whether it's, uh, vague or not. I can't do a full screen, but, um, can you all see the screen? No?
Yes, there we go.
Good evening, Andrew Shine, representing the property owner in this. Uh, this is the statute, I think we should all read it. Um, I did highlight three different sections, or really only three parts of this, and it's a really simple statute. Within 30 days after receiving an application, the municipality has to review for completeness. Clearly, that doesn't mean it has to be planning and zoning board ready, because DRC, you know, we can't go, the staff can't generate comments and us address comments all within 30 days. That's not reasonable. So clearly, that 30-day in-between application, acceptance, and completeness does not mean it's ready for planning and zoning board hearing. It, that, it's just a nonsensical argument, given under the statute, because that cannot be done within 30 days. I wish it could, but it can't be done within 30 days. Uh, in this case, I, there's an email from the city stating when our application was deemed complete. In this case, there's an email from the city stating when our application was deemed complete. So we know it was deemed complete on November 8th. The second part of the statute is within 180 days, there has to be a final, within 180 days for applications that require final action through a quasi judicial hearing, the municipality must approve, deny, or approve with conditions. There were a couple of questions as to what if anyone's trying to game the system. The solution to that is really easy. Staff denies the application. If it doesn't meet any criteria within that 180 days, staff denies the application. There's no gaming the system here, because all staff has to do is deny the application or get an extension or a waiver from the applicant. Those are the only two options there. If an applicant is facing a denial because they either haven't gone to planning and zoning board yet or whatnot, then they'll grant the extension. There's no gaming the system here. The third is the extension part. Both parties may agree to a reasonable request for an extension of time. Hearing that, just merely knowing about the statute means that we've granted an extension is crazy to me. That means now everybody in this room, anybody who wants to put forward a development application, they've all automatically agreed to an extension because now they know about the statute. I was trying to rack my brain about how to address that argument, and it's, I respect the attorney on the other side, but it just, that argument does not make sense, that we granted an extension merely by knowing about the statute. So I'll leave this up to the commission, of course. The city attorney has said in no uncertain terms that going forward with this hearing would violate state law. But we are prepared to move forward with the presentation. If that's, if we want to violate state law, then we'll sit here and do it, but...
So Mayor, can I ask Mr. Shine two questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So here's the first question. You prevailed at planning and zoning by a four to three vote. If you did not prevail at planning and zoning four to three vote, that would still have had to come to the commission. Would you have just voluntarily said, oh, sorry, we have to accept our defeat because we're past the 180 days, so we don't want the commission to consider supporting the project or approving the project? Would you have stepped forward and just said, hey, we got this 180-day statute, we're just done now? We can't even hear if the commission wants to approve the project?
No, we would have, of course, asked for an extension.
Oh.
But that's, we did receive the approval within 180 days.
Yeah.
We received planning and zoning board on day 163, in fact.
I understand. I'm just saying, if it was, four to three is a very close planning and zoning board vote. If it just was four to three the other way, my point is, I have a feeling that this 180-day issue would not have even been brought up by you. I have a feeling that you would have been happily moving forward to the commission, pushing for a reversal of the planning and zoning board's four to three denial.
Likely, but that's not really relevant to whether this hearing violates state law or not. Of course, I would have done what was best for my client, and in that case, it would have been asking for an extension.
So my second question...
This is irrelevant to whether this hearing violates state law.
I don't think it's, I understand what you're saying, but I, it's just a point I wanted to make. I also want to understand, so you brought this up at the last meeting about the 180-day statute. So any time during the process when you were waiting for staff to get back to you, or on any comments, or when you were putting together more information for staff or getting ready for planning and zoning, were you looking at the clock? And did you notify anyone, say, hey, we're really close to the 180 days, we got to speed it up?
No, I calculated the 180 days the day of, on May 17th, the day of that it went to call up. I knew about the statute. I didn't necessarily know exactly how it applied to this project, but no. And we frankly have not been monitoring the clock on some things. But for this one, no. We figured out the day of that May 17 hearing that this hearing would violate state law.
So Mayor, I think what I really feel about the situation is that I can find fault with both the applicant, and I can find fault with the city, because we definitely should have been paying much closer attention to the clock and the statute. But again, I think that, I think the applicant pulling out the information and bringing it to our attention when it was brought to our attention was also a little bit of a hail mary. So that's why I just feel that we should go forward with the de novo hearing.
Well, there's equity in this law. And what you're saying to me is that the right thing to do is to go ahead with the de novo hearing, because we should have the, we should not be held back by an artificial timeframe, which apparently they use to their advantage. Your question to him about whether or not he would have granted an extension if P and Z had denied him, it makes obvious sense that he would ask for an extension. But again, to my original point, I think the statute was designed to help developers, not hurt them. So it was slanted in such a way to give them every option that would be at their disposal to move their project forward. Yes, we should have been more circumspect as to what our role was in all of this. And yes, you know, the public should have a right to weigh in on this and not be precluded from participating in the decision. But the law is the law. There's the equity and there's the law. So I don't want it, I don't want the city to beg for a lawsuit by doing something improper here. And that's why I'm asking all of us to weigh in on this, because, you know, we are going to be slapped with a lawsuit if we have a de novo hearing and deny the application based on the interpretation of the statute. Maybe there needs to be appellate decisions to help define the statute, I don't know. But I don't want to be the test case. So what is your pleasure?
Well, my pleasure is to move forward with the de novo hearing.
All right. Is that the consensus of this commission?
I mean, what do you feel?
Yeah, you didn't say that.
Like you just said, you don't want to...
You put it on the district commissioner.
Test case for the appellate case. I don't, what does that mean?
Sounded like you said you don't want to do it, but then...
It sounded like it, but...
You threw the district commissioner under the bus.
Well, I, the thing is, I want to weigh in on the side of what's equitable, but I'm often weighed down by what the law says. So, but, you know, I think we should still take a shot. Let's do the de novo hearing. And I think that the city attorney is probably correct in the interpretation, but I think he's only giving his interpretation based on his ability to interpret a very vague statute. It's, I mean, there's no fault here on either side. The statute is so vague, the process is so loose, and the opportunities for gaming the system are replete throughout the entire process here that, you know, but I want, the public is here, I think the public should participate, and let's just go with it, all right?
Mayor, I would, just for clarification. I did want to, I did want to hear, though, from Ms. Bogdanoff, if she had any rebuttal to what Mr. Shine said, just so we could just have that opportunity out there, and then we're done with that, with all the attorneys talking, because you're an attorney, I'm not an attorney.
I get it, I get it, I'm sorry.
Just want to have that opportunity.
Talking legal talk.
That's okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's why I should go to court, so you guys could talk legal talk.
I just, and I'll be brief. I don't want, I think there's a lot of muddying up the waters. This is very simple. It's, did the developer know that about the 180 days? And based on history and all of the applications that have been out there, were they agreeing to just simply move along the process and waive the 180 days? And the argument there is the statute does not require the waiver to be in writing. So do we know whether or not he looked and said, oh, you know, we're running up against the, you don't have to specifically say, oh, we're running up against 180 days. Your actions will tell you whether or not you waived it. So let's look at the history of all of the applications that are out there. Since 2019, the developers have been repeatedly waiving the timeline, and they just decided to cut it off at this point. So I just wanted to bring this process up. And by the way, statute is never meant to eliminate due process rights. It eliminates your due process rights and it eliminates...
We don't have due process rights. It's our regulatory process. We don't owe ourselves due process.
Right, we don't have it.
And, come on, let's be intellectually honest.
You have a right, you're...
I don't have a due process right. I'm the regulatory body. They have a due process right. Let's be...
Well, you're going to violate their due process rights, potentially.
Maybe his, but not mine. I don't, I'm not, I don't owe myself due process.
Potentially, you're going to violate his...
You don't have waivers by assumption.
It's not an assumption, it's by action.
Your memo has assumption written all over it. It's, you use it very, in a variety of ways.
I never used the word assumption. Alan, look, I don't want to get into a argument with you.
It's not a debate we need to have, wait, Ms. Bogdanoff, it's not a debate we need to have anymore. I think the commission is planning to make a decision here.
Okay.
And I think we're going to have a de novo hearing.
Okay.
So let us prepare for that, and let us proceed. So...
I would ask, if we're going to go down that road, that we look at the other remaining items.
I don't think it's going to take that long. How long is it?
Trust me, we just took an hour to do this.
We're going to give them each 15 minutes, and we're done.
Out of courtesy for those who are waiting on other items, I think we can run through those very quickly and give them as much time as they want, if we're going to do a de novo hearing. I don't think we can get it done in this time.
Most of the people here, I think, are for Luminaire, right? Yeah. Except you.
It's only 7:30.
You're for, yeah. So I think most of these people are here for that.
It's only 7:30.
And it's only 7:30, and there's only a few more items left, so we're...
I just wanted to see if we could pull them, and then we can give them all the time they want.
Okay. Well, I'm going to limit to 15 minutes per side, so we'll make that, make, I think you can make your presentation fairly quickly.
And Mayor, can we just have the city attorney give us a lay of the land? What are we doing in a de novo hearing? What's the standard? What do we...
Well, the de novo hearing essentially is going to have Mr. Shine make his presentation, presumably. Presumably, he's ready to do that. There's only two parties to this process.
Okay.
Mr. Shine's client and the city. So to the extent that Mr. Shine has a presentation, he would do that. And then obviously, if the city commission has any questions of staff, then you would proceed with that as well. And then obviously, you'll hear public input.
And what's the standard? Give us, you know, flesh it out a little bit here.
It's de novo. It's the standard that P and Z, it's the staff can address. It's, you're basically reviewing this project as if you were the planning and zoning board, so you're following our ULDR code. So staff would have to use...
So we have to decide whether or not we want to give them the yard modification they're asking for?
Right.
That's as simple as that.
You're taking on the P and Z's job at this point.
Right. We either agree to it, or we don't agree to it.
Great. Any guardrails, any things we can't consider, Alan?
Well, typically, evidence has to be fact-based, so generally, the law will, you know, you can hear public comment, but if it's, I'll use this as a loose example, but if somebody comes up and says, I don't like the project, well, that's not evidence. That's not something you can consider.
Yep.
It has to be fact-based.
Okay.
Mr. Paulo, do we need evidence when we're just making a subjective judgment as to whether or not to give them the yard modification?
You're going to need to, now Florida statute requires you to articulate in writing, so whatever decision comes out of this...
Right.
...in writing the basis of your decision. So you ought to articulate that.
I understand that, but isn't it in the complete discretion of the commission as to whether or not we should give a yard modification?
Generally, yes. Staff, Mr. Farado may have some criteria that typically they follow, so he may be able to speak to that more clearly, but...
Okay.
And are we allowed to hear from the public? What's the...
We're allowed to hear from the public. It's just, again, that...
How many speakers do we have?
What you consider as evidence, since it's quasi judicial, has to be fact-based.
Yep. Okay, great.
Thanks.
And Mayor, what's the, what are the, is it two minutes a person, or what's...
We only have like nine or 10.
Okay, great.
We'll say two minutes, two minutes per person.
Two minutes, okay, great. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Alan, that helps.
Mayor, can I just get clarification on what Alan said? Is there criteria for considering the yard modification?
I would defer to staff on that.
Okay, so Anthony's going to give us that, because...
Right, those are technical provisions within the ULDR.
Okay, well, we'll get to that then when you're ready. Okay, because I need to know what that is as I'm listening to the evidence to see if I'm...
All right, Mr. Shine?
Supports it.
Are you prepared? I know you're prepared.
Andrew Shine with Lockery and Chalkus, representing the property owner. We were definitely, we're prepared to go through with this hearing. We believe it's actually a beautiful building and is compatible with the current history of development on Hendrick's Isle. The property is located at 500 Hendrick's Isle. This is a far aerial. This is a closer aerial. You can see on both sides of the street, they're highlighted. On the east side of the street, which is to the right, is currently a five-unit condo Marina-type building, one of those old buildings that you, that used to be typical on Hendrick's Isle. On the west, right now, is nothing. There is a live aboard boat use there. They've had between one and two live abords there over the years. Whether they've been there legally or not, we're not entirely sure. We know they got a variance in 1979 to have a live aboard use there. So we know it was legal at the time. But anyway, this project is getting rid of that live aboard use.
This is one parcel?
It's the same development site, yes.
Right, but is it one parcel?
On the property appraiser's office? Or, yes.
It is, okay.
Yes, considered a single parcel. This is the front rendering. The building is 55 feet in height, and it is seven units. So we're replacing the two live abords and the five condos with the same seven units. All of the parking will be on the ground floor. This is the view looking southeast. You can see the neighboring building, which is also five stories next door. And this is the view from the waterway. We do have balconies on the east and west sides, so facing the street and then facing the waterway. We purposefully did not include balconies on the south or the north for privacy purposes for both of those residents, so we did not do balconies. There was confusion at P and Z whether the neighbors wanted balconies or not. It's official, they do not want balconies, but we did take away the balconies. This is the current site plan. You can see on the bottom of the screen, which is on the west side of the street, we're getting rid of the live aboard use, which frankly brings in a lot of passive income for the owners, having just a live aboard use there, no maintenance, no upkeeping of an interior apartment, just have a live aboard use there. So we're getting rid of that nice revenue stream, doing a beautiful landscape area, and adding two additional parking spaces. We heard from the neighbors early on in this process that parking is generally an issue on Hendrick's Isle. A lot of these buildings are built at their parking requirement with no extra spots. So the problem you have is guests are going up and down Hendrick's Isle and just parking on swales on the street. To mitigate that, we added two additional parking spots that are not counted towards our parking requirement. They are just two completely additional extra spots to hopefully help with that guest parking issue that's on Hendrick's Isle. So here's the criteria for modification of required yards. I can't stay on this screen forever, but this is the criteria that decides whether or not to get a yard modification. And they have a lot of ors and ands. What we're focusing on here is C, D, and E, which we believe we meet. A and B, as in, you could either do A and B or C, D, and E. So one, continuity of architectural features, including those listed in E, which we'll get to. Continuity of urban scale with adjacent properties, including height, proximity to the street front, and relationship of building size to lot size. That last one will become very important. And E are the architectural features. We have to have a minimum of four. You can see, bolded there, we have well more than four. But E goes back to C, where it says you have to have a continuity of architectural features, including terracing, balconies, color and material banding. This is all fairly standard for the newer projects on Hendrick's Isle. Most have balconies, terracing, color and material banding. So just based on this criteria, we believe we meet the criteria. But some of this criteria is subjective. What does continuity mean? What is, what does continuity with adjacent properties or compatibility with adjacent properties mean? And we put this in a number format to try to quantify this. And we're going to quantify it three ways. First is the raw number of what our setbacks are. Second is, goes back to the words of the criteria, relationship of building size to lot size. And three is the overall building separation. In the modification of required yards, it requires an analysis of properties either on 300 feet of both sides or 600 feet on one side. This project was also subject to neighborhood compatibility, which is a much more general and subjective standard, is it compatible with the neighborhood? So to figure out whether it is, we analyze the neighborhood, specifically all of Hendrick's Isle. And we found 10 other projects on Hendrick's Isle that have been approved since the modification of required yards, ULDR section has been implemented. We found 10 other projects that received yard modifications. So let's go for the setbacks' raw number. I'll make this quick. I'm going to skip through some slides quickly, though. I'm going to skip through some slides quickly, though. 500 Hendrix Isle, we have 12 and a half foot setbacks. This is starting at the beginning of the aisle. They have seven feet 10 inch setbacks. So the first building, one of the first buildings, 1931, has seven foot 10 inch setbacks. Now granted, this is only on the side of, they have a two-story or three-story townhouse, so it does go up and then step back after the second or third story. But they're seven feet 10 inches from their neighbor, from their property line, and we're 12 six. 45 Hendrix has a 20-foot setback. 60 to 80 is the only one that we've analyzed that actually met the setback requirement. Others have all gotten yard modifications. 110 Hendrix has an 11-foot 8-inch setback. And we also, these are all properties that are five stories in height. So I'm not looking at two-story properties and comparing it to our five-story building. That would not be very genuine. But these are all five-story buildings and their setbacks. This is 124 Hendrix Isle, another five-story building. They have 10-foot setbacks. This one was just recently approved over the last five or so years by Planning and Zoning Board. 301 Hendrix has seven-foot setbacks, again for a five-story building. 309 Hendrix has 10-foot 1-inch setbacks for a five-story building. 400 Hendrix has 20-foot setbacks. 444 Hendrix, who most of the folks are here for tonight, has between 24 and 25-foot setbacks. 532, 534 Hendrix is the last one, is, you could see it on number, where is it? 5348, 10-foot 2-inch setbacks. So overall setback-wise for a five-story building, we rank five out of the 11 that have most recently been approved over the last 20 years. So raw numbers, our setbacks are actually compatible with the neighborhood. Numbers don't lie. I, I understand that emotions may run hot, but the numbers don't lie, and our setbacks are compatible with the history of development, the recent history. The second, and this is probably our most important, is the relationship of building size to lot size. It is expressly a criteria in the modification of required yards. When we looked at relationship of building size to lot size, we looked at the building frontage. So when you go down Hendrix Isle, it's not uncommon to see an almost 200-foot-long building on a slightly larger lot. Because if you have, the, the building length limit is 200 feet, but if you go up to 55 feet the max, all you have to have is 27 and a half foot setbacks, and you can have a 200-foot-long building. So when we're talking about preserving view corridors and light and air, what we're looking at is the percentage of the lot width that is building and the percent that is setbacks. So in our case, we have 100-foot lot width, 12 and a half foot setbacks, 75% of that building frontage, if you were looking at the lot, 75% is building, 25% is setbacks, light, air, view corridors. And we compared this, as you have to in these types of applications, it requires a comparison with other projects, we compared this to the same projects. 1931 Hendrix is on a 225-foot lot, but with seven feet 10-inch setbacks, so 93% of their building is building, 90% of their lot is building. 45 Hendrix, 80%. 60 to 80 Hendrix, even though they had the required setbacks and a distance separation between the two buildings, still only 76.4% of their frontage, not only, 76.4% of their frontage is building, the rest is setbacks. Again, we're at 75. Here, the lower numbers is better for view corridors. 110 Hendrix, 88.3% is building. 124 Hendrix, 80% building. 301 Hendrix, 90.6%. 309 Hendrix, 73.1%. They're on a 75-foot lot with 10-foot 1-inch setbacks, so although they have smaller setbacks than us, they're on a smaller lot, which means that more, a lower, more, a higher percent of their lot is setbacks. 400 Hendrix, 80% of their lot is, is a building. 440 Hendrix, our neighbor to the south, 75% of their lot is a building. So that's, that's our neighbor immediately to the south. We have the exact same amount of relation, of setbacks as compared to building length. So when you're talking about comparing the lot size to the building, we're very similar here. 532, 534 Hendrix is number eight, 84.7%. So out of these 11 properties that were analyzed as part of compatibility with the neighborhood, we ranked second, we're tied for second on the highest percent of setbacks for the property. The last is overall building separation. I added this in here just to give a little lay of the land. I don't think it's as relevant as it could be. This analyzed the distance between buildings. So our neighbor to the south, their north setback plus our south setback. Of course, this could be changed in redevelopment, but it gives a good picture of what the distances are between the buildings now compared to what they will be in the future. Not going through each one here, but currently, our building is 30 feet 4 inches from their building. We're proposing to have 37 feet 9 inches to their building. So we are increasing the distance between our buildings currently. But we still rank number two on the distance separation between the buildings. That was on the south. On the north, we're proposing, we were, our northern neighbors, we do have a support letter for, so. And then total separation, this is the separation of both from the south and the north, we're ranked number five out of 11. So that's the project. We do believe, first of all, it's a beautiful-looking project, but more importantly, it is compatible with the pattern of development on Hendrix Isle. If we wanted to rewind 20 years, change the code, and not approve these projects that have been approved over the last 20 years, we, you know, we can't do that. Right now, we have a code that we have to comply with, and it's about compatibility with the neighborhood. The numbers do not lie here, and we believe that this building and this development is compatible with the pattern of development on Hendrix Isle and even far exceeds it in a lot of circumstances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, could you just go back to the criteria that we need to evaluate, please? So I'm tracking this. Somebody just?
Andrew, can you? Can you put that back up a second? Because I, I want to compare that to something that I'm reading in the staff report and in the backup. And maybe you or Anthony can help me with this. But when I look at, under modification of required yards, in what we actually have in Exhibit 5, page 2 of 5, this is pursuant to ULDR Section 47-23.11.8.3. And it has, if you look at what you have here as C, there is a continuity of architectural features with adjacent properties. This says that, and again, I just need to find out why the discrepancy. When I'm reading on the CAM, it says, "Criteria for modification of required yards. Planning and zoning board may consider a request to modify the required yards, provided that by adjustment of the yards, it is found there is a continuity of architectural features with adjacent properties." And then there's more. It says, "which encourages public pedestrian interaction between the proposed development and the existing neighborhood." And I'm just trying to figure out why that language is not on this slide.
I would have to check, though. We meet that language as well.
Well, that's debatable, but that's okay.
Yeah, that's not, that's not what's in municode? I have municode pulled up on my phone. That section, that language is not included in what's on, what's published by the city.
Maybe Anthony can help me with that. But Anthony, I'm reading that from Exhibit 5, page 2 of 5, which was actually part of the staff report that was done for planning and zoning on April 20th, 2022. And I just want to know why that language is not here in front of us on the slide. And I'm looking at, under modification of required yards. It's just that rest of the sentence that doesn't seem to be in front of us now, which states, which encourages, in other words, it says that you have to find there's a continuity of architectural features with adjacent properties, and then it goes on, "which encourages public pedestrian interaction between the proposed development and the existing neighborhood." Why is that language not here under C? 3C.
It appears to be a typo. I'm not sure where that language comes from, but it doesn't talk about pedestrian interaction in the ordinance. I have the ordinance open in front of me, and it stops at?
Okay, but do you, by any chance, are you able to look at that staff report from April 20th, 2022?
I haven't.
Okay, so do you see on page 2 of 5, under modification of required yards, at the bottom of the page?
Yes, no, I, I'm.
Oh, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So you, we don't know where that, but you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I have to look into it and see what happened there. I'm not sure why that language is included. There's some circular references.
Isn't it, it looks like it's in 3B on the slide. Am I reading this wrong?
No, I'm talking about the continuity of architectural features, C.
I know, but if you look at B above and it's crossed out?
I see what you're saying.
It looks like it's in B, and then it says, it could say or, if you go back, someone?
Yes.
Then it says or, then you get a blank and blank and blank. So maybe they were doing the or and didn't pick up the, what was in 3B?
I, I see, the slide has changed, but.
Yeah, can we go back to that?
I think I pressed the button.
Yeah, but.
He doesn't apply.
Commissioner, right, Commissioner Maritas is right, the language is up above there.
And.
That's correct, I do read that way as well, in 3B.
And so therefore, it should not apply because they chose the or path, which was C, D, and E.
Right, which is.
Are we having technical difficulties?
Obviously. Okay, there we go.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yes, uh, okay, I see, but that's interesting. The applicant chose that, however, staff mentioned the other language, if you look at the staff report. But I underst, but I understand what you're saying, but you don't know why. So that should not have been there, though.
I apologize for the disconnect. We should have focused on the criteria that the applicant had responded to, so we'll make sure that doesn't happen again.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one more question for Mr. Schein. Thank you for that clarification.
And, and I would like to add one more thing to this code section, if possible. I think the code section might be in the backup. There are three more criteria, not necessarily going towards the, the bulk of the modification of required yards, but there are three more that all other zoning applicable minimums must be met, which we do. One, that we can't cast a shadow on more than 50% of the waterway between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM on March 21st. We did submit a shadow study for that, so we, we meet that as well. And the third is that it's a subjective criteria, that the intent and spirit of the dimensional regulations of the district concerning yards as relating to light, air, and shadow are maintained. And we do believe that since we have the lowest percent, one of the lowest percents of building to lot size, that we definitely meet the intent of light, air, and shadow, particularly as compared to other developments in this aisle.
And I know that you're focusing on that building to lot size, but I want to focus on something differently. I want to look at the height of the buildings and then what code says about half the height for the side setback. So if you go back to some of your slides there, because I, I, let's just even look at the neighboring building. So 444 is, correct me if I'm wrong, 51 feet 4 inches high. That's the height. So the side setbacks, according to code, should have been 25 feet 7 inches, but it actually has a 20-foot side setback. So it's only, I'm sorry.
To, to the building, yes. The balconies jut out a couple feet in front of it.
Right.
But to the, to the face of the building.
Right, and staff did elaborate on that, how they might have looked at it differently now as opposed to back then. But if you look at 500, your building, you're a little bit higher, you're 55 feet, and so the required side setback would be 27 feet 6 inches, and you're offering 10 feet 6 inches.
12, 12 feet.
Well, I'm sorry, 12 feet 6 inches. I saw, yeah, I was reading the balcony one, but that's no longer applicable. 12 feet 6 inches. So the difference between a required 27 6 and 12 feet 6 being proposed is quite different than a requirement next door of 25 7, but also going 20. I mean, that's only a five-foot difference on that setback. So if you were to apply that differential to you, instead of a 27 feet 6-inch setback, you'd have 22 feet 6 inches, where you're only offering 12 feet. So in my mind, I'm looking at it that way, not the size of the building in comparison to the lot size. So I'm still coming up 10 feet short on each side.
Well, I, I, it's unfortunate that you're not looking at the size of the building compared to the lot size, because that's one of the criteria for this application. So I would urge you to look at that criteria.
I have looked at it, but I'm also looking at the height and the required setback based on half the height.
Understood. Yeah, they're different lots. One of them is 100-foot lot, one of them is a 200-foot lot. If you had to have 27 and a half foot setbacks on 100-foot lot, you don't really have much room to build anything.
Right, but when you purchase a 100-foot lot, you should know going in what the zoning and the code is and know what you'll be able to build without any.
Absolutely, absolutely. We did this analysis before submitting for the project. We looked at what the setbacks are of previous approvals. We looked at all this. We looked at the relationship of lot size to building size. And the number, again, this is all about compatibility. It's not about, it's only about compatibility. And then, again, the numbers do not lie. We did look at this, and it is compatible. So I, I understand what you're saying, but again, we are looking at the numbers here to define compatibility. And this is, this aisle is full of five-story buildings that got yard modifications. Most of them, a lot of them, more egregious, significantly, they're egregious, the, the previous ones that got approved.
Right, but I'm, I, I don't want to look back at mistakes that were made in the past. And I will tell you, I, I, no, that's a pick. I, you know, and I, and I'll just say this once, but, you know, when I served many years ago on Planning and Zoning Board, and all of these buildings came in front of us, it's like, I almost feel like Amazing Kreskin. I predicted the future. I said, I voted no on all those buildings. And I voted no because I said, we, we're killing the air and the light and the separation. We don't have enough parking, which ended up being true. And I said, you know what? These buildings were creating a wall down these aisles. And so I, you know, what's done is done, but I still think that this commission has an opportunity to change the direction going forward, because there still are more development projects coming. You know, I, I'll be honest with you, I've driven up and down this aisle now at least 10 times in the last couple of days, driving myself crazy, trying to really look and, and study and examine the differences between the buildings, seeing the buildings that are there, seeing what's happening. I know 10 Hendrix was just approved. I'm not even sure, I have to check on what the height is and what the, Planning and Zoning, I think it was approved, I don't know what the lot size is, I don't know what the height, and I don't know what the setback is. But again, I just want to say, and I know that you keep telling us where you fit in the spectrum of all of these projects, but I just want to say that that was done. We didn't have anything to do with that, but we do have the opportunity to just change the direction going forward. And having, I think staff also needs to really study, what are we doing on these aisles with the setbacks, because.
But Commissioner, to his, to his point, while the standard is one-half the height, the setback should be one-half the height, the law also allows them to ask for a reduction based on these criteria. And, and so his argument is, he's well, he's well within the criteria to be able to ask for a narrower side setback. And it's up to us, or Planning and Zoning, as the case may be, to make the decisions to whether or not it fits into the, into the neighborhood through, through the compatibility standard. But to his point, there, there is a set of criteria that does allow him to ask for a reduction in the side setback. So it's not like this is the first time we've seen it, and, I mean, I don't know your history with planning and zoning, but I do know that there have been a lot of buildings that have come before us in the recent past in which we have agreed to narrow the setback, whether it be the front yard modification or the side yard modification. So now, it's up to us to decide whether or not we want to do it. We're not obligated to do it, even though the law says he can ask for it, but we're not obligated to do it. But I do think that it would be misreading the law if one were to say, well, the only thing you could get here is one-half the, the side, the side yard setback in comparison to the height of the building.
No, I understand. In fact, that's why I said, and by the way, you're right, there are provisions in the law for him to ask. Again, it's not a guarantee that it'll be granted, but you can ask. And I think that sometimes with yard setback modifications, it is a degree to which you're going to grant those. It's a degree to how far you're going to let those modifications go. That's why I mentioned that, you know, 444 is only five feet less than what the law requires in terms of that side yard modification. But this, on a much smaller lot, is 10 feet less than, I mean, if you applied the same numbers to this project as you did to their neighbor, the applicant would have to give us 10 feet more on each side. But I understand what you're saying. So I'm, I'm just saying that we're not obligated to grant this large a side yard modification. That's all. And to me, that's what this is really boiling down to. And I have more points that I'll make later with, you know, when we get into it, but I, for me, it's really just a degree to which we're willing to go on these side yard modifications and what we want to see, you know, this aisle become, and other aisles as well, where this might also happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just clarification, though, because I keep going back to what I'm evaluating today, and for this to know a hearing, I'm looking at C, D, and E, continuity of architectural features with the adjacent properties, and then D, continuity of urban scale with the adjacent, adjacent properties. And then in addition to the reduction in the minimum yards, they need to include a minimum of one of these four from the list of about the 10 that are provided. So I'm not really, I know we are talking about setbacks, but we're not, we're not deciding today if we are going to give you a setback. We're just.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
We're.
That's the point of the hearing today.
Well, I, well, I guess we're not deciding it, if it's half the, half the height of.
Well, the standard is, the standard is that the, that the setback is half the, is the distance of half the height of the building.
Right.
That's the standard. And there are ways to ask the city for a reduction in that, in that setback. And, and the applicant is saying, well, I've, I've complied with some of the criteria, and therefore I am entitled to ask for that. Everyone's entitled to ask for it, doesn't mean we have to give it.
Right.
And that's the point I was trying to make.
Okay, so it's, it's not, okay.
All right.
So his, his reduction is the numbers that he gave.
He gave up something.
Yeah, right.
All right, I saw the comparison.
Do you have any other thought? All right.
No, I just want to make sure I'm, just like I said.
Okay.
Bring my notes in the correct columns.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions on Mr. Schein? Okay, thank you, Mr. Schein.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could reserve a few minutes for any.
Okay, very good. Ms. Bogdanoff, or actually, really, it's staff, not Ms. Bogdanoff, I'm sorry, staff. Who from our city staff would like to comment on why these yard modifications were granted and why they feel it's appropriate in this situation?
Anthony, please, speak loud.
Yeah, it's hard to understand unless you're like right on the microphone.
How's this?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Anthony Fajardo, Director of Development Services. So in this case, you have an applicant that is requesting something that requires a site plan Level 3 approval with the call provision by the City Commission. In that situation, staff's responsibility is to ensure that the plans meet the ULDR prior to moving forward. So that's what staff did. When it got before the Planning and Zoning Board as the approving body, they were the ones responsible to determine whether or not the applicant met the criteria and that it was suitable for approval. So in this case, staff's authority was limited to ensuring that the applicant was ready to move forward to that part of the process and putting them on the agenda. Does that answer your question?
So staff had the authority to grant the yard modification based on the criteria in the ordinance, correct?
No, we did not have the authority to do that. Only the Planning and Zoning Board can do that.
Okay. And you presented the case to Planning and Zoning as to what their criteria were if they chose to do it.
So at that, yes, at that stage of the process, it's on the, it's the applicant's responsibility to make that argument to the Planning and Zoning Board based on the responses to those criteria.
Right.
That it was planned earlier.
Right.
And then for the Planning and Zoning Board to make that determination.
And the Planning and Zoning Board agreed that they were entitled to their reduction in the yard modification?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's the status to which, and that's the status that came out of the Planning and Zoning Board? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Fajardo?
I do, Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Anthony, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Thank you. So when I read the staff report that went to Planning and Zoning, it's interesting to me that under waterway uses, and I'm looking at all the different review criteria, waterway use, modification of required yards, adequacy enabled compatibility, et cetera, et cetera. Almost in every case, when staff addresses these criteria, it says what the applicant is applying for in terms of modifications or whatever else. And then it goes on to use the words "to allow," and it then explains from staff's perspective what it allows. For instance, the applicant is requesting a modification to the 20-foot landscape yard requirements to allow for active outdoor amenity use in order to allow for the pool deck, pool, and balcony, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But yet, when it comes to the modification for the side yards, it just says what the applicant is doing, but staff doesn't go on to say, "To allow what? Why should we say yes?" And yet, staff does go on to do that in every other instance. So any reason for not getting into that detail, not getting into the weeds and then explaining why staff thinks it's a good idea, or what does it even allow? What does it benefit the neighborhood, the street, the neighbors by granting a side yard setback modification from 27.6 to 12.6?
So a lot of the responses that staff generates in this situation, because it's not a staff decision, are parroted from the narratives that were supplied by the applicant. So if we're asked to do an analysis, let me rephrase that. If the code requires us to do an analysis, we would create our own verbiage, but we usually parrot what is in the narrative so that the Planning and Zoning Board or the approving body sees that in the report and doesn't have to go search for it in the backup. And it's a response that they give to make the argument that they're meeting that criteria. So like I said, it's really up to the applicant to make those arguments. I'd have to check with the author of the staff report and to make sure that that's what was, what has happened. But in my experience, that's generally how it's always done.
So basically, you'll just repeat what the applicant is providing as the rationale for those requests?
For the criteria that the applicant's responsible for, yes.
Okay. So then I can assume that there was no reason other than, oh my gosh, this lot we bought is too small for this building, because they're not going to say that. But in other words, there is no benefit that's offered in this explanation as to why the side yard modification should be so dramatic?
I'd have to defer to the applicant to respond to that.
Okay. Let's go to comprehensive plan consistency on page 4 of 5 of Exhibit 5. That's, again, is the same staff report that was provided to Planning and Zoning. So under comprehensive plan consistency, staff has determined the proposed development is generally consistent with the city's comprehensive plan goals. For me, the word generally is tough to accept. It's just tough, it's too subjective. I don't even know what that means in terms of, I mean, should we be better than generally? Should we be really, you know, convinced that it's, that it's doing everything it can to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policies? Or is it not? I just would, to me, it's just too vague. Why do we use that word, generally?
So this staff report predates the conversation that you and I had on the dais on a similar topic. We've since changed our analysis. It either meets it or it doesn't. So in this case, I would accept generally as staff saying that it does meet the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. We use that term for, we had been using that term for many years now. The reason that we had been doing it is because some of the policies and goals are, they're not solid, you know, have-to-dos or, the comp plan doesn't give you exactly the method for accomplishing it. It says that you should do this, or you could do this, or you should, your goal should be this. There are other sections of the comprehensive plan that are more definitive, but in most cases, it's really a guideline more than a solid, you know, direction to take to get to point B. So staff was using the term generally historically. We've changed that now. But to clarify, the term generally in this case means it does meet it.
Okay. Well, that's helpful, so I appreciate that.
And you won't see it again in the staff report.
And I won't see it again. Okay. Well, thank you for that. See, we did accomplish something. That's it for now, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. We have public comments, so if anyone else.
Can I just ask Anthony real quick, one last question?
Yeah, go ahead.
When I was looking at C and D, the word continuity, can you just define that for me a little bit? When we.
So continuity of architectural, I think you're talking about continuity of architectural features with adjacent properties and continuity of urban scale with adjacent properties. So there's some things to take away in those sentence, in those sentence structures. For instance, adjacent's not defined in our code. We define the term abutting. We don't define the term adjacent, so we use the common definition of it. So we look at other properties in the area when we're doing an analysis like that. Continuity is really to show that, you know, your mass, scale, your design is something that's, I hate to use the term generally, but generally consistent with what you see in the surroundings. It doesn't mean it can't change, at least from my planning perspective. It doesn't mean it can't change. So if someone's doing something that's one architectural style, say, something more modern, and someone is doing something that's more traditional, I think that that could happen as long as the scale and the mass and the architectural features are generally the same size, you know, they complement each other, they don't compete with each other, that type of thing.
Okay. So when.
I would also add, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I would also add that if, as you look over time, things do evolve. So you really shouldn't look at something that was maybe constructed in the 50s and use that as a guideline for what you would construct in 2022.
Right. Architecturally speaking. So when we're looking at the whole street, like when Andrew was showing us all the data, we are comparing it to other properties and their setbacks and everything, we're looking at all of that when we're making our decision for this continuity, for this, the C and D.
Yes, I would agree with that. And if you look, if you look at what's been built along the core of that aisle, there are very modern structures that have been built over the years that have a lot of contemporary design elements to them.
Right. I don't know if we're maybe so concerned about the architectural style. I think most people think it's probably a nice-looking building. It's probably more the urban scale and, you know, because we're talking about, obviously, the setbacks on the side, but does it meet the definition of continuity of urban scale compared to all the other properties on the streets?
Right. And I would also direct you to, the term is architectural features, right? So that also talks about, are there balconies under the buildings? Yes, there are balconies under them. Fenestration, cornices, you know, other elements that you would look at from building to building, are they there? And are they consistent in the area that you're looking at?
Okay. So I have to look at that, but it doesn't seem to be something that people are complaining about, so it does seem like they meet that. Maybe, seems like both sides would probably agree to that. So I'm kind of looking more about, maybe, maybe D seems to be kind of a little bit more the item that people may be concerned about, just that urban scale size. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to call the names by three so that you'll know that you're about to be called up. Matthew Wells, followed by Randy Obi, followed by Mr. Stein. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Dr. Matthew Wells, and I am the president of the Homeowners Association at 444 Hendrix. And I just had a few counterpoints to some of Mr. Schein's points that he made tonight, but really, actually, many of them that he made at the P and Z meeting, which should be on record, and which was a very close vote, which I believe is unusual, and I thought they were misrepresentations. So he claimed that he had support from both the neighbors from the north and the south. He claims to have a lot of support from the north. I'm not aware of anyone in our building that supports this project. Secondly, he said, "This is the only viable option for this 100-foot lot." I would say that's not true. You could do a four-story building, you could do a three-story building, you could do townhouses. All of those things would easily fit with a 100-foot lot and are consistent with our street and have been done, and would just make his developer a little less profit. He states that the separation between the buildings is greater than many other buildings on the street. That's because 25 of those feet are from our building. He also claimed that the building must be this wide in order to accommodate the driveway plus the statutory requirement for parking spaces. That may be true of about 62 feet of his building. The other eight feet on the other side are storage units. I'd love to have a storage unit in my building, but I don't. You don't have to have storage units that measure eight feet or approximately eight feet on either end of the building. That would cut 16 feet from the building and give them about an 18-foot setback. Certainly seems more reasonable. And the last thing he said during tonight's meeting is, he said, "We don't need to rewind the years and change the code." And I would just argue, no, we don't need to rewind the years and change the code. We just need to follow the code.
Hello, I'm Randy Obi. I live on Hendrix aisle. Commissioner Moritas, you were correct in what you were saying. This really comes down to Item D, what talks about urban scale with adjacent properties. An urban scale is actually defined, and Mr. Schein mentioned this too, relationship with building size to lot size. And then he went into, he had a couple of different analyses. He had a front edge analysis, which I think is totally irrelevant. You know, certainly if you have a 300-foot lot and you have a building with the required setbacks, you know, that's going to be a bigger percentage than a building on a 100-foot lot with the required setbacks. It doesn't make sense. It's not a good comparison. And the same with the overall building separation. You know, that depends what the neighbors have done, but really, we should look at this as, you know, if we put this building here and the neighbor does exactly the same thing, what are we going to end up with? One of the things that, well, I sent you all an email today. Hopefully, you all had a chance to read that. And I'll give a couple, just a couple of quick examples. You know, Mr. Schein talked about compatibility with other buildings. He talked about 110 Hendrix having 11 feet, 8-inch setbacks, but that's only for the first floor, which is parking. That building makes a lot of sense. It's not, you know, a solid cement wall 55 feet high. At 124 Hendrix, he said the setbacks were 10 feet, but that's to the first-floor balconies. The actual setback to the building envelope is 18 and 1/2 feet. So can I have 10 seconds to summarize?
10 seconds.
All right. To summarize, what I would say is, if any reasonable person read these yard modification rules and looked at what's been going on in the last few years, they would say, no, that's not what this, this isn't how this was supposed to turn out.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have one question.
Sure.
Thanks. Nice to see you. I want to just repeat something that you said at Planning and Zoning. This is in the minutes, and I want you to just clarify it a little bit for me.
Okay.
Mr. Albe continued that there are no five-story buildings on Hendrix aisle that have the type of yard modifications requested by the applicant. So you stand by that statement?
There are no buildings constructed. There's one at the end, it was at 534.
Right.
They, that was approved recently, within the last couple of years.
Yeah, that was great.
That has a 10-foot setback on one side.
I know. That's a weird part of the aisle, though, and that's kind of strange, and I don't even know how that got approved, but it is.
Yeah. And even 124, he says it's a 10-foot setback, but that's only to the balcony.
So when you say, because obviously, this project proposal is five stories, when you said that there's no other type of yard modifications like this on the aisle, what did you mean when you say no other type of, like, a specific number in mind, or this is just way off base, or?
Certainly a number in mind. You know, he's requesting a 12 and 1/2-foot side yard modification, and there aren't any five-story buildings on Hendrix aisle that are built like that.
So there are no buildings on Hendrix, five stories, that have a 12 and 1/2-foot yard side setback?
Not all the way up, not 55 feet high.
Not 55 feet.
There might be one story or two stories.
Right. I understand.
A reduced setback, but then the rest of the building appears to have the required amount.
Okay. So I understand that part. You then went on to say that the Neighborhood Association Development Review Committee met with city staff, which provided many of the same addresses that Mr. Schein had used for purposes of comparison. So when you met with city staff, were you able to verify what you just said in terms of no five-story building having side yard setbacks of 12 feet, 6 inches?
The criteria that they gave us, I think, is the same criteria they gave Mr. Schein, and they don't, they don't talk about the extenuating circumstances. They'll say the setback was this, but they don't say it was for the first floor, or maybe the first two floors, or it was for, you know, a wall for the parking garage or something.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Stein, followed by Greg Lester, followed by Mr. Gonzalez.
Hi. My name is Dan Stein, 301 Hendrix aisle. Thank you for the two minutes tonight. I'll try and keep it brief. Two of the things that I deal with as a public relations counselor is messaging and the court of public opinion. The only messaging that I have heard, read, seen, or digested from the developer is, well, everybody else got to do it, so we get to do it too. That's the messaging side. And in terms of the court of public opinion, all I know is that I'm really glad I got a seat on the bus tonight, because there were a whole bunch of people from the court of public opinion who gave up their evening to be here. Thank you.
Mr. Lester, followed by Mr. Gonzalez, followed by Debbie Isiger.
There are a couple of things I want to correct on some of the things that Andrew was talking about.
Try to speak into the microphone if you can.
Sorry. Great. Okay. He actually referenced 10 different buildings that are on Hendrix aisle. There's actually 112 buildings on the aisle, so he referenced 10 of them. He also referenced five-story buildings, and he said himself that the majority, and it's all but two, of the five-story buildings sit on lots that are over 200 feet. They're either 200-foot or more. The two that sit on 100-foot lots, there's one that was done in, I think, 2004, which was actually to code, it's 117 Hendrix. And there's another one that's actually 124 Hendrix that's a new building. It's being built right now. And I think it's what has everybody in here upset is because they basically built two five-story buildings right on top of each other. It's 110 Hendricks and 124 Hendricks. And they put it to where it's almost, they almost touch each other. You can almost hang a cleaning line across and hang your laundry out, it's that close. And I think that's what my building is so enraged about. Okay, is that they, they tried to modify them. If you think about it, it's a 100-foot lot that they're trying to put a 75-foot building on. Okay, so it's, they're asking for a modification, or a variance, that I would call it, of 30% of the entire lot. It just doesn't fit on that lot. You know, I've heard many times that it's, it's too late. We came in this thing too late to try to object to this building. I know that Randy was at the DNC board meeting in the very beginning. He objected to it. I know that probably 30 people were at the actual site meeting with Andrew, the day of the site meeting, and I know it was objected there. It was again objected by like 25 people at the P&amp;Z board hearing, which we lost 4 to 3. I know at that 4 to 3 loss, Jay Scheckman, one of the guys on the board, actually said that he didn't have enough, he didn't have enough proof to deny it. But if he made that comment, how did he have enough proof to approve it? So, look, I guess I'm, I'm asking that you guys reconsider the size of the, of the buildings that they're putting on the lots along our aisle, because it's just not even close to what the code says. I mean, to me, you know, rules are in place for a reason. You know, where does, where does this actually stop? I mean, based on the side yard modification and by the, by the actual saying of it, you could actually build up to the property line. So I ask you guys, as mayor, please, commissioners, you know, save our street. You're our last hope.
Thank you, sir. All right, all right, come on. You can only applaud after we talk, not then. Mr. Gonzalez, followed by Debbie Isinger, followed by Mr. Cohen.
Dagoberto Goncalves, resident of 444 Hendricks. I just want to reinforce two points that were made here before. Number one of the points made by Dr. Matt Wells, there are other alternatives. So there were, from the design, other alternatives. There are buildings in the, in the area with other alternatives being built right now. Townhouses, small buildings, a reduction of the storage area. So there were other alternatives, there are other alternatives. The second point I want to reinforce is a point from the city staff. Architecture is changing, so looking at the past is not the way to go. Need to look at the code, and I need to look at what the code is trying to do. It's trying to protect the design of the city, the design of the area, the value, the, the aspect of the region into there. So you need to follow the code, you need to set the future, and that's the role of the commission, the mayor, we expect for you, is to protect the future of that region by making sure the buildings are compliant to the codes and making correction to the codes to the areas that are not clear. But they need to follow the code and need to imply the code. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Can I ask you a question? Let me, can I ask you a question? Could I, thank you. Should there ever be variances given for yard?
I think if there are variances, the variances should be discussed under a code and should be, if there is a case for an exception, it should be heard. We should have had the participants, for example, the residents, to be able to participate onto the whole process into this. So for us, at least some of the residents, this came in the 11th hour for us to try to organize and have a discussion about this, this whole topic. So, and it's, once you build, it's done, and you can regret the past. So you need to set it for the future. First, make sure, right now we're pointing out many failures in the code. This is the moment to act and clean up the code. That's the first thing. Then you begin to apply the code where it needs to be. And when there are exceptions, you need to think about that the exceptions are gonna open precedents. And the precedents can dictate what you're gonna have into the future. So precedents need to be viewed with a lot of caution in terms of this.
So you're saying there should be vari, variance should be allowed? Is that what you're saying? Carefully?
If a variance would be considered, it should be extensively discussed, and the future implications of that variable should be extensively discussed before they could be considered.
Okay, and you don't think this has been discussed enough?
I don't, just the fact that we're saying that's a very unusual 4 to 3 change into this, or approval into this process, that's not typical, is for me an indication that it was not extensively approved or discussed. Otherwise, you would have so discussed that you would come into a meeting and an approval process with a lot more consensus.
So you'd like to discuss more with a developer? Is that what you want?
I, I think at least it should have been discussed more in terms of what could be done into those. And as Matt Wells said, there are alternatives that could do, that in our opinion could have been discussed into there.
Okay, thanks.
Debbie Isinger, followed by Bradford Cohen.
All right, second round today. In question, Vice Mayor Sorenson. I do believe in variances and yard modifications, but they need to be appropriate. So I actually wanna start out, 'cause there's a recurring theme that you're hearing here, that in defending the project's appropriateness and the right to yard modification, the attorney for the developer actually appears to have been quite misleading when he spoke to a number of us when we met with him on site at the property. I was not at the P&amp;Z meeting, but I am told that the comments were misleading. And I'm gonna share with you, one of the first slides you saw up there was a property 19 to 31 Hendricks Isle. That's where I live. And the developer of that property, I live in a townhouse, so the, a townhouse abuts each side of a 55-foot tall building. So you're really looking at what I would call taking or tearing, because the side that abuts the north and south properties of other units are only two stories high. So perhaps there was a 10-foot setback, but actually the setback to the 55-foot tower of my building was probably about, met the standards of 25 feet. So when you look at all these setback modifications, there's a degree of tearing to make it acceptable and comply with the regulations for setback modifications by allowing appropriate amounts of light and air to flow through the area. So those are very important factors, and I think, again, that 4-3 P&amp;Z vote was because they may have been a little bit misled, and I think it was very unfair. And I'm glad that you're getting the opportunity to hear the right story, and you're getting the opportunity to hear from your constituents and residents who are so impacted by this project. One of the things we, one of the reasons we formed the Neighborhood Association is because we were concerned about development along the properties. I mean, what we're seeing today, these luxury developments that are built from the 90s to, started in the 90s through today. And would you mind giving me just another minute as president of the Neighborhood Association?
Okay, go ahead.
So what I did wanna share is what we're seeing. When these developments started in the late 90s to today, most of them did embrace the, the whole concept of maintaining the openness from the street to the waterways, allowing that light and air and wind to free, to flow freely. But what we're seeing with this recent development boom in the real estate market, investor developers are flocking to the area in a desire to maximize their developable space without any consideration to neighborhood compatibility or concerns for those residents who are most impacted. I do live at the total other end of the block, but the neighbors, and we did try to talk to the developer and the attorney and say, "Work with us." Several times, we met on site after Planning and Zoning meeting, even back to the DRC meeting where Randy was in attendance for that meeting. Said, "Hey, this is not the right project. Please work with us." They totally chose to ignore the will of the neighbors. Thank you so much for listening.
What's the question for you?
All right, don't go away. I have a question. I wanna follow up on the vice mayor's line of thought. So the, the code has a standard of a yard setback of one-half the height of the building. And the code can contemplate a reduction in that setback based on criteria, which are very subjective. Now, you spoke of light and air, but what if a, what other criteria, for example, can be considered as mitigating circumstances in order to provide the developer with an additional side yard modifications? For example, in this particular instance, I see where the backout parking is being eliminated. And that's been a big problem in a lot of these aisles where people wanna get rid of backout parking. So they're getting rid of that. There's also a situation across the street with the livable board, which is also a big problem in the city, and the developer's getting rid of that. Are these, are these instances, are they appropriate to balance the mitigation aspect of this in order to allow a developer to have some sort of consideration for a side yard setback that would be a reduction that, that they're requesting for in their application?
So, Mayor, one of the things you talked about is backup, backout parking. We're a street that's a mixture of luxury boutique condos and townhomes. I live on the very beginning of the Finger Island in a townhouse. Mine's backout parking. And I'll be honest, I don't have an issue, and I like living in a townhouse. This is the complete other end of the street. And the parking garage that they're doing, in order to meet the parking requirement, by the, by the way, has to have a lift for one of the cars because they can't accommodate all the, the cars to park within that garage.
But my point, you, I think you get my point, but you're speaking around it. In other words, instead of just light and air, are there other mitigation aspects to the design and construction of a building that could be considered in order to accommodate a developer in their seeking a side yard modification?
So I think you're looking at compatibility. And one of the things they shared with you is if you look on the block, some of the other condominiums with a side yard setback, where they're talking where it goes to the balcony of the building and not the wall of the building. So you at least have an open balcony, like the one at 440 where the neighbors live. They have an open balcony. This one took the structure as far as it could on the north and south side so they can fit greater square footage with the building. And again, I'd love to see this building built, and I agree wholeheartedly. The whole idea is, we're transitioning, and I think it was Susanna Bryan who wrote an article recently about Hendricks Isle, Venice Isle. She said, "From shabby to chic." We're glad we're going that direction, you know? And I respect the rights of livable boards, but there's other places at this point for, you know, the time for relocating, and we are developing this. But we need to be compatible. And so open balconies would be preferable and, you know, decrease the, and I can't, you know, I don't wanna legislate exactly what he builds, but what I would say is, work with us. Work with the neighbors. And I'm gonna share you a personal story. You know, we've done some development, my husband and I, and we built Aqua Blue. And the residents from Corinthian, even though we were in complete compliance, we didn't have one variance or one setback modification. But the residents in Corinthian next door said, "Please don't build it the same height as ours, taller than ours. We want it shorter." You know what? We sat with them in a room here upstairs the night of the.
Yeah, I, I know, 'cause I sat with you. And, and there were, there were modifications, there were side yard modifications, there were height discussions. There were all kinds of adjustments made that were not consistent with the code. So don't say there weren't side yard modifications, 'cause there were.
Okay, then I apologize in that, but I think that the height was in compliance. That was the issue, and I do apologize if I don't.
The height, it's, so it's interesting about the height, because Corinthian asked that the height be reduced, which we did ultimately.
Right.
Then when the building was built, they complained that the height was reduced, because now they look at the, they look at the mechanicals on top of the roof. So now they're upset that they have to look at the mechanicals.
But we did.
So watch what you wish for sometimes.
We did sit, and we did work with them. And so what we've been saying from the very beginning of this process is, please, work with the neighbors.
I, I understand, okay.
And so we do embrace the rights to variances and modifications, 'cause there's a place, there's a place for that, absolutely. But let's work together.
How many feet are, would you like for the side yard modification? Give me a number.
I can't throw a number out there. Again, I would say, to me, they've gotta work with the, with the neighbors, is what I would say.
Okay, so you have no idea what you'd be comfortable with?
I can have my, my own personal feelings, but I really think it's not, I, I, we don't have. One thing I do wanna say is, we need to work together on a master plan, yes, going forward. And we probably should have, the city and the residents should have started a master plan when the building boom began in the late 90s and said, "Hey, you know, all these mom-and-pop apartments of the 40s and 50s are gonna transition. Let's go ahead and put the brakes on, let's create a master plan." But we're now halfway there. And so Commissioner Glassman, we would love to work with the city. I, I'm pointing to you, 'cause you're a district commissioner. What can we do to create a master plan going forward and make sure that we don't put ourselves, that a developer and the property owners don't put themselves in this position yet?
Okay, so you want open balconies, I think I heard you say that.
I think open balconies gives people a little distance.
Okay, that's not what I heard from.
I don't think they wanna.
They're saying no, they're saying.
They don't want balconies, 'cause it, it's a privacy issue. They don't wanna see pool towels hanging over the balcony.
Yeah, Mayor, are we able to alter any other part of this plan? Are we only voting on CDNE? Yeah, I guess, I just wanna make sure we're sticking to what I'm voting on and what I'm, we're getting a little sidetracked, master plans, this, that, we're changing the balconies. Aren't we just voting on the side yard modification?
Well, we're voting on whether or not to approve the project, which includes side yard modification.
But isn't that just, that's the one element we're analyzing right now?
That seems to be the element.
We're not modifying the rest of this property right now.
Right, that seems to be the element in contention.
Are we able to take, say, go work with the neighbors and change this whole project?
Well, no, not, not in the posture that you're in now. You're approving the whole project, not just the side yard.
Right.
Right. The site modification, the side yard modification is the bone of contention here.
Right, that's, we have to see if that meets the criteria. So that's what I'm analyzing, does it meet the criteria? But also at this point, can we say we think there should be additional changes? And you need to go back to the starting board?
Well, you, you can approve, you can approve with conditions or deny. The problem you're running into is the time constraint, so if, if you don't make a decision tonight, it possibly can be deemed approved because it's not gonna be within the 60 days. So you're gonna have to have a decision now within that timeframe, 'cause you said the de novo hearing, so.
Right, well, I think we're already, the, the number of days is already an issue that, that's already.
That's a separate, that's a separate number of days.
That's a whole separate issue.
No, no, but that, that's a statutory, we, we're talking about the statutory. We're talking about in our own code.
Moving forward with the number of days from now, okay.
Okay, thank you, Debbie.
Mayor, I had a question for Debbie.
Oh, okay.
So Debbie, because I always wanna make sure that people understand this balance in neighborhoods, projects are supported, sometimes they're not supported. So your Neighborhood Association just supported 10 Hendricks at Planning and Zoning.
Yes, we did, and we.
Why?
And again, it's a different-sized property, it's a larger frontage lot.
Do you have any idea how wide that property is?
I think it's 225-foot-wide property.
And how high is the building?
And the building is 55 feet high.
And what are the side yard setbacks?
Side yard setbacks, other than the first floor, which has a modification and a larger parking garage area, it begins to tier a little bit. And so it does meet, and I, again, I don't remember all the details off the top of my head, but I did write a letter.
Well, I'm trying to get to the point of, this product is the same height, it's 55 feet.
Right.
And required 27 and a half yard setback. It's only giving us 12 and a half. What did 10 Hendricks Isle give on the 55-yard?
I think it's about 25. Randy, is it 25 feet?
Do we know what the side yard setback was on the required 27 and a half?
Wait, 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 we can't ask from the audience. All we can do is ask from city staff.
Okay, it was just at Planning and Zoning, so.
City staff should know that, right.
I, I'm just trying to make the comparison to a building that's the same height, and what was that approved at?
The building was 190 feet long. The setback to the building face was 30 feet. The balcony is encroached into that setback five feet, so if you went from end to end, it was 25 feet to the balcony.
25 feet on each side?
I believe so, yes.
And then it was, the building itself was 190 feet?
Yes.
On what size lot?
I would have to go measure real quick, but I can do that.
Well, 190 and 25 and 20, you do the math.
So that's, what is that, 2, 250 or something, 240? Okay, 240, and, okay, thank you. And the neighborhood approved the project? Supported the project?
We sent you a letter and asking. We sent you a letter and asking that, you know, some of the requests that we had made in terms of how they deal with their crew and so forth.
Right, okay, no, I just wanted to make the comparison on the side yard setback, being consistent with the height of the building in comparison to the one in front of us today. Thank you, I'm good Mayor, thank you.
So it's interesting that you asked that question because I think it's a mistake to make the comparison and I'll tell you why. Because the length of the building allows a developer to create, create a structure that has more usable space. If you use a 100 foot lot and try to give 25 foot side yard, you can't really build much of a building. It would be like the Tower of Pisa, you know, it's just this tall skinny thing. There's not much you can put on each floor. So I think it's a little difficult to make that comparison, but that's just my opinion.
No, I understand, but as we've heard tonight, you can build something else on the site. You can build a smaller building, you can build townhomes.
Yeah.
And the people that bought 10 Hendrix aisle for that size, they bought a property that is large enough to accommodate that building.
Okay.
That's all.
I know Mr. Cohen's been wanting to speak, so.
Sorry.
Good evening Commissioners, good evening Mayor. I spoke with the city attorney prior to stepping up to the diocese because I wasn't sure if I could speak because I am on planning and zoning. And Commissioner McKenzie appointed me to planning and zoning. I don't want to address anything that I discussed on planning and zoning because my record on planning and zoning stands for itself. You have the transcript from planning and zoning. But I did want to discuss just in general, the city approving, not just setbacks, but variances overall. I think that we're coming to a point with the city where, I've been sitting on planning and zoning for many years. I was sitting on planning and zoning prior to Commissioner Glassman sitting on planning and zoning. Actually, I guess I sandwiched you. You were first and then I was second, then you took my position afterwards. So I sat back then and I sat now. And I think that when we look at the trajectory of the city with variances and code modifications and asking for variances, I think it's a very slippery slope. I think that at some point, we have to address developers that buy properties knowing what the code is, knowing what is allowed on that property, knowing what they can build on that property and then figuring we can just come before planning and zoning or the city and ask for modifications to get the most bang for our buck out of that property. So I think going forward as a city, I think we really have to decide what we want for our city. Do we want to maximize profits on different areas of the city? Maximize profits on smaller lots? Or do we want to take a stand at some point and say, this is something that we have to stop before, if I can have just 30 seconds to wrap up. This is something we need to stop before it gets out of hand and everyone starts asking. And that's the problem with the first guy who asked, right? He's like saying, hey, I need this modification and I'm compatible. And that guy gets a modification. The next guy says, hey, look, I'm compatible because that guy got a modification. So really the city needs to start looking forward and not, you know, not looking backwards at the mistakes that were made, because I think there were some mistakes made. But looking forward and I think this is an opportunity to do that. And I just want to disclose, because I know the attorney will get up here afterwards. And I disclose this on planning and zoning as well. I did, I represented in the past, a business owner that lives in that building when I objected to the mask mandate with the county, which my firm won. But putting that aside, but when I objected to the mandate, one of the individuals who lives in that building owned a business among 15 other businesses that I represented. But I wanted to make that clear to the commission because I know he's a very talented attorney. I'm sure he would get up and say, hey, Brad represented. So I wanted to also make that clear. But I think that you have a real opportunity to really look forward to the city. And I know this commission does look forward. I mean, we're talking about tunnels and things like that. You know, I think this is an opportunity to tell developers, look at pieces of property more carefully. Because at this point, we want development that can fit into the property and you can't rely on just getting a modification and maximizing your profit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, hold on a minute. Alan, is it appropriate for me to ask Mr. Cohen a question about his no vote at planning and zoning?
No.
It's not, okay, thank you, never mind.
You got it, thank you.
Alan Bogdanoff and then Mr. Schein if you want to conclude.
Thank you Mayor and Commissioners. Just briefly, Commissioner Maritas, you had asked about whether or not, you know, the adjacent properties, and we actually have a definition. In that section of code for definition, it reads, "adjacent property shall mean buildings located on the same side and fronting the same right of way as the proposed development and within 600 foot distance on one side or 300 feet distance on both sides of the proposed development." So when you're looking at compatibility and to create that continuity, you need to be looking 300 feet. Some of the buildings that were referenced are really far away. So when you look at the building to the south, which is what I represent, that would be something that you would look at for continuity. It is adjacent. So I think that was an important point to bring up. And the only other thing I wanted to say is, just as a general statement, is the code is about providing notice to the developers and to the community as to what they can expect. The developer came in and obviously knew what the code said. Perhaps maybe somebody did an assessment, said, oh, they give modifications all the time, but that should never be assumed. But my clients bought their property knowing what the code said and believing that they were going to be, their properties were going to be protected based on the code. And I think that also has to be considered. So it's a two-way street. It's the existing residents that are there, that played by the rules. And there's also the developer. And I think they need to play by the rules too. And we did sit down with the developer, we had a conversation and we talked about what the community did. And we gave him parameters, I emailed him to. We did not hear back and I understand why because we were trying to determine if there was going to be a de novo. But we did talk about a smaller setback for the first floor and then going back to code for two through five. I don't know if they could build that building, but I'm not an architect, nor am I a builder, a developer. But I, you know, we did try to sit down with them and to provide some alternatives that would be satisfactory to the community.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schein.
Andrew, is there, is a compromise possible? Is there a way to work?
So it depends on what the demands are.
Okay.
I did meet with Ms. Bogdanoff and Randy from the association and then Mr. Lister, who's the neighbor at the penthouse level. I met with them about two weeks ago. And Ellen said that she would get back to me regarding the demands and what they would find acceptable. I did get that email from Ellen this past Friday, so only a few days ago. And the demands, interestingly, were a 10-foot side yard setback on the first floor, which seems to run contrary to the whole light air and visibility to the waterway. They're accepting of a smaller setback than we have on the first floor. And then 25 feet on floors two through five. And it just, if that's the demands and what they will accept, we can't do that. That's a, 25 foot setbacks on a 100 foot lot leaves 50 feet for a building width and you have stairs, elevator shafts that take up a large part of that. It's just not possible to meet what their demands are. So they also asked for townhouses. And that townhouse talk was a couple of days before Planning and Zoning Board. So these have all been, you know, right before the hearings, we've been getting these demands. And the answer is we can't meet those demands. Either physically on the site, monetarily, they just can't be met.
Okay.
We did want to go through, we wanted to do compromises that we, you know, could do, even though they would financially hurt us, getting rid of the live aboard use. Making that whole area across the street just green space maintained by the association. It didn't have to be that way. We could keep the live aboard use there and make, what, $6,000 a month doing nothing? Just letting the live aboard stay there. But we got rid of it because we heard it's not liked. We added the two parallel parking spots there because we heard about the, you know, that was a very early concern by the neighbors is the parking on the street. So we are paying to build and maintaining in perpetuity two additional parking spots that we didn't have to do. So we did try to meet, not meet, we gave them what they wanted on the concerns that, you know, we could do. Yes, it would cost us money, but we can do it. If that's what would make them happy, we'll do it. But things like a 25 foot setback on a 100 foot lot, it's just, we can't.
Was there any feedback from them when you shared that about the 25 foot setback?
I just got that from Ellen Friday, so no feedback since then. I mean, our architect couldn't turn anything around in a couple of days before tonight's hearing.
Hard, hard number.
All right, we can't speak from the audience. So anyway, Mr. Schein, why don't you give your conclusion?
Yes, I just want to reiterate that our presence tonight should not be construed as any effective waiver of chapter 166.033 of the Florida statutes. We're here not under protest, but this is not a waiver of that still. Just a very brief cleanup points. Ms. Bogdanoff stated that we should be looking at properties within 300 feet on both sides or 600 foot on one side. What wasn't mentioned is that this project is also subject to neighborhood compatibility, the general neighborhood compatibility standards, which require an analysis of the neighborhood. Neighborhood isn't defined there, but we chose all of Hendrix Isle for the analysis. So I don't think it was improper to analyze the neighborhood when we have neighborhood compatibility as a criteria. Two more very brief things. Commissioner Glassman spoke about Hendrix Isle becoming a wall of buildings. And I don't necessarily disagree with that. But the problem is not these short buildings. When you have 190 foot long building, like the one that was just approved by Planning and Zoning Board, and you might have 25 foot side setbacks or 30 foot side setbacks, but you have 190 feet of building. That's what creates this, this street wall of just buildings. If every building was only 75 feet long and you had 25 feet of setbacks, 12 and a half, 12 and a half, Hendrix Isle would look a lot different. We wouldn't have these just walls and walls of buildings. We wouldn't have 200 foot long buildings. So while you can comply with the setbacks on a larger lot, yes, I agree with that. That creates the problem of these long buildings. So assembling more parcels and having longer lot widths doesn't solve the issue. It's, that's what's been creating the issue with these long buildings. Lastly, is the point of thinking forward, which of course we should be thinking forward. But the criteria for modification of required yards and neighborhood compatibility inherently requires an analysis of what was done in the past. When you're saying you comply with the neighborhood or these yards are consistent or the architectural features are consistent, you have to look at the past. You can't look at the forward and compare it to what's been, what is going to be done. So looking at the past is not just important for this application, it's the criteria for this application. If the code could be changed in the future, sure, yes. Another thing that could solve it and that we support and would give help to or anything we need to is the idea of a master plan. Because this project, again, is subject to neighborhood compatibility. And one of those criteria is that it's consistent with the neighborhood master plan. So if there is a neighborhood master plan, that's the way to move forward. But for this project, we have no choice but to look back because that's the criteria that we're looking at for this project, is looking backwards.
Mr. Schein, let me ask you something. If a city is trying to improve its community and if a neighborhood is trying to change its look and improve its appearance and the architecture and so forth, why would we be looking to the past upon which to determine what is compatible? When we're trying to make a change, shouldn't we be looking to criteria that would, that would change the past and try to create a future?
You could change the code to do that or you can create a master plan to do that. But I'm reading just from the criteria of the application that's in front of you today. And it's continuity of architectural features with adjacent property.
Well, but if we follow that.
Continuity of this with adjacent properties.
Okay.
You have to look to those.
But if we followed that pattern, Flagler Village today would be, would be an area of single family structures. And there would be no 20-story buildings, there would be no 10-story buildings, regardless of the side yard modifications. There would be nothing that you see today if we relied on the past in order to determine neighborhood compatibility. How would you explain that under these circumstances?
What the city did to build those areas, even if they were subject to neighborhood compatibility, they changed the code and they created a master plan for it.
They created a master plan, but it still required neighborhood compatibility as a criteria for building design.
Today, the neighborhood compatibility is not a requirement for projects.
There was a time when it was.
Understood, but when the code was changed to create these regional activity centers on the districts, a master plan was created to change that. If those weren't created and neighborhood compatibility was the only criteria that existed at the time, I would say that you would have to go back to what Flagler Village was before. But that didn't happen because you changed the code, because you created the master plan. And this is not all criteria in the code. Not all criteria requires backwards looking and what has been done in the past. But for the criteria that this application is subject to, you have to look at the adjacent properties. You have to look at what has been done in the pattern of development on Hendrix Isle. There's, can we change the criteria? Yes. Can we create a master plan that developers will have to abide by in the future? Absolutely. But that's not in front of you today. The criteria that's in front of you today does require that analysis of neighboring properties.
Okay, but the criteria that's in front of us today requires us to consider it, but is not obligated to consider it. In other words, we're not obligated to give you the side yard modification, but you are entitled to ask for it. Isn't that what the standard is tonight?
That's not my, my understanding is that you have to.
We have to give it to you no matter what.
Oh, no, no, let me finish. That's absolutely not what I was going to say.
Okay.
My understanding is that you, as a de novo hearing, you have to review this application under the criteria in your code.
Right, but let's go back to my question. While you're entitled to ask for it, based on the criteria that are set out in the ordinance, we're not required to give it to you, even if you do qualify.
That would be a question for the city attorney?
No, it's a question for the commission.
I, I guess you could, you could go against the language in your code.
No, no, we're not going against the language. We agree that you are entitled to ask the question.
Right.
We agree that you're entitled to ask for a side yard modification. We agree that you even comply with those requirements. But this commission, does it have the right not to give it to you because of other considerations?
If, it depends on what the considerations are. But if an application meets the criteria, you're, I mean, you're saying, you just said it complies with the criteria. I would be hesitant to not.
So you're saying we have, you're saying it's a shall and not a may?
You're asking if a project meets the criteria in the code, can you deny the project?
Can we deny the request for a side yard modification?
Right, so if it meets, you're saying it meets the code.
If you qualify for the ask, in other words, you're eligible to ask because you meet certain criteria within the ordinance, right? Now, what?
No, that's, I don't, I don't believe that's a correct statement.
Oh, really?
Anyone's entitled to ask whether they meet the criteria or not. And you can meet none of the criteria and still ask for it. You could still apply for it, you'll probably get denied at planning and zoning.
Okay.
But you can still ask for it.
Okay.
It's reviewed under this criteria though.
Right.
But you don't have to meet the criteria to ask.
So let's say you meet the criteria. Are we, is it, does it say in the ordinance that the, that planning and zoning or the city commission shall then give the side yard modification?
No, the commission can deny, even if a project meets code. I guess the commission could deny it. I don't know if that would be the proper.
Would it be legal for the, would it be legal for the city commission to deny the application even though you meet the standards in the code?
I, I think that's legal advice to the commission. I am hesitant to give you that kind of legal advice. I, all I can.
So you're saying that the city must grant the side yard modification if you meet the requirements in the ordinance?
I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I'm saying if the city commission believes that the criteria in the code is met. I mean, the city commission is the one who approved this criteria, so.
Don't we have to give language when we approve or disapprove, saying why we approve or why we disapprove? So shouldn't that be like, we approve because it meets blank, blank and blank? Or we disapprove because it doesn't meet blank and blank?
Yes, you would have, you would have to justify whatever decision you make. You'd have to justify on what basis. So yes, the way the. So yes, the way the code is written, if they satisfy the code, you'd be hard pressed to deny. You could deny it, you could do that. But then they'd have a basis to come back and say, we complied with your code. It's not fully discretionary.
So are you, it's not discretionary?
Not fully discretionary. They, we have, in, in parts of our code where neighborhood compatibility, for example, right? Very amorphous, right, the way that it's been written in the past. If they meet the criteria, now you can say they haven't met the criteria and say, well, we don't feel you've met neighborhood compatibility, then you can deny it. But if you come to the conclusion they have met it, it's very difficult to turn around and then say, no, you cannot.
So the, so the ordinance says, so the ordinance says that if they comply with the certain elements that they didn't cross out. They crossed out some that they know they didn't comply with, but the ones that they didn't cross out, that they feel they've complied with. If they, if they, if they have complied with it, the City Commission is required to grant the side yard modification?
If, and again, Mr. Farharder can speak to it, because there's, part of the issue with our code is there's a give and take as well, so there, there's trade-offs, and he can speak to it. Sometimes they, they'll trade something in order to meet the code for a modification in that regard, they've given something else. So I'll have to have Mr. Farharder.
Well, the reason why I ask that is because if, if, if staff has determined that they've met the requirements, why are we even here tonight?
Because you don't have to follow staff. It's de novo. I mean, you, you have professionals working for you that, that provide you this information. You don't necessarily have to defer to them. I mean, they know what they're talking about. They're very good, but you can disagree with them. You are the deciding body, so you don't have to agree with your staff.
If we disagree with staff, is that a basis for an appeal?
If you disagree, well, if you, anytime you're going to deny a project, it's going to be the basis for first-tier review. So the proponent, the, the applicant's always going to come back and say that you misapplied the code, or they'll come up with an argument that advocates for granting of their project. So the minute you deny, you have a basis for certiorari review.
Well, if we deny something, a person can always appeal, right? But do they have a legal basis upon which to stand because we disagreed with staff opinion?
Well, it's not just a matter of disagreeing with staff. It's a matter, you, you'd have to articulate the reason. You can't just say, well, you know, we don't like the project, we're just not going to do it. You're going to have to articulate a basis where something hasn't been met in order to be able to convince a court that you had a proper basis to deny the project, because the developer, you know, as you know, in Florida, developer have lots of rights. And we have a code that gives them a guide path to development.
Right.
If they check off all the right boxes, they can go back, I am entitled to this, I'm entitled to that. If you deny it without justification, then yes, the courts will look at that and say, well, you need justification in order to deny it, because according to the evidence and the record before the court, they've checked off, and I'm not saying that for this project, I'm just saying generally, if they've checked off all the right boxes, they're entitled to it.
Well, you said the word entitled. I don't know if that concept is contemplated in, in this type of review. I don't think there's entitlement anywhere. Entitlement is a strong word in these, in this-
There is. Your code, if your code says that you can build if you do A, B, and C, and the person does A, B, and C, you can't say no.
Well, if they want to build a 55-foot building and their setback is 27 and a half feet, that's an entitlement.
It is, but again, again, I defer to Mr. Farharder because there's a give and take there. It's not just a straight ask. There's usually some give and take for that, correct?
You want to help us out here, Mr. Farhardo?
I'll try, I'll try. So I think what Alan is trying to get to is that when you have hard and fast rules, say the 55 feet-
Speaking to that mic.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. When you have hard and fast rules, the 55 feet, that's a number, right? It's, it's there. Neighborhood compatibility is more generalized. It talks about shadow, mass scale, odor, visual nuisances, that type of thing. In this case, because they're asking for a modification of yards, you have language, "By adjustment of the yards, it is found that," and then you have those statements that the applicant provided up on the slide that said they believe that they meet those requirements for the continuity of architecture and, and the urban scale of the adjacent properties. I think the ultimate answer to your question is that if the City Commission finds that the applicant did not meet those, that's the criteria under which you would deny a project. So it's not, they're not, it's not a, a black-
So it's, it's within our discretion as to whether or not those criteria are satisfied?
In this case, yes. If you, I believe if you make that determination, that you find that, that did not meet that criteria, that could be your basis for denial.
Right, so if I can, I can read the language in that name. So in Section 47-23.11, entitled modification of required yards. In subsection A says criteria for modification of required yards. "The Planning and Zoning Board shall upon written application for site plan level three approval as provided, blah, 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 consider a request to modify and required yards as specified in the table of dimensional regulation, so on and so forth." So they, if, if they don't meet the criteria, you have to deny it, obviously. If you find that they have met it, so if all of you, all five says, yep, they've met it, it'd be very hard for you to say, no, but you know what? They've met it, we're not going to do it.
Right, but the shall in your sentence referred to the need to consider it. It didn't say shall approve it.
Right, but again, the distinction is that you, you obviously have discretion to find and disagree with staff or find that they haven't met it. It, it's not appropriate for this building.
Okay.
Not appropriate for the neighborhood, so whatever modifications you don't deem appropriate according to our code, absolutely, you have discretion to do that.
Right.
But if all five of you decide, or a majority of you decide that, yes, they have met it, and then you still want to deny it, that's where you-
That, okay, I understand that. Okay, all right. I have no further questions. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Moved, seconded.
They moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie. Vice Mayor Sorenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Moritz.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentos.
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Mr. District Commissioner, do you wish to make a motion on this?
Certainly. Thank you, and I appreciate everyone's time tonight for showing up and, uh, commission and staff. And I also wanted to let the applicant know that I actually think this is an attractive building. I, I do like the design. I like a lot of things about the building. I just don't like where it's sitting. And that for me is the issue. So I am actually going to make a motion to deny the application, because I do not believe that it meets Code Section 47-23.11.8.2, and I do not think it meets Code Section 47-23.11.8.3.
Do you want to pull those up?
What are those sections? Yeah, can you help?
So we can see what they say again?
And you don't need a second on that. It's an introduction of a resolution.
Right.
There's two resolutions. You have one approving, one denying.
Right.
So you don't, you don't need a second.
Can you pull up the section on the screen again so we can kind of see what, what the commissioner is saying? Is it in the backup maybe? I didn't memorize the code last night. Oh, here it is.
Didn't.
Sorry. All right, so what are you referring to here?
Right, 47-23.11.8.2 and 47-23.11.8.3.
Yeah, three, C, which ones?
It's not-
Maybe can you read the words?
Which, which, which sections up here are you saying they don't comply with? The applicant is saying that he complies with C, E, and E.
No, that's just, on the top, it says ULDR Section 47-23.11. So we need 8.2 and 8.3 after that. There it is.
Can you see what's on the screen?
So you, you want to read, so which section again?
A, I'm sorry, A2 and A3.
Okay, so A2 is an or, so it's either 2 or 3. So if he doesn't comply with 2, which is the, which was the permanent open public space, which he agreed that he did not comply with, so then it goes with 3, which says, "By adjustment of yards, it is found that there is a continuity of yards between the proposed development and adjacent properties, and there's a continuity of architectural features, and there is a continuity of architectural features with adjacent properties, D, there's a continuity of urban scale with adjacent properties, and E, in addition to the reduction in minimum yards meeting subsections A3, A, and B, that includes a develop, minimum development of four of the following architectural features, which is terracing, roof lines, cantilevering, angling, balconies, arcades, uniform cornice heights, and so forth and so on." Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, and, and bottom line, in layman's terms, I just feel that the yard modifications are excessive, way, too excessive. And it just doesn't, it does not meet the requirements for the yard modification.
So you feel that, are you saying that this is not consistent, is, is not neighborhood compatible?
I mean, I, I could say that, and I will say that, because I believe that in terms of buildings this height and on lots this size, it is not neighborhood compatible.
Okay. All right, so the, there's a, there's a resolution that's been introduced to deny the application. Any further comments or questions by any other members of this commission?
Well, I just kind of keep going back to what we were looking at.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I guess I do feel like the applicant has shown that, you know, with the C, D, and E, that they do have that, you know, those features listed there. So, I mean, I guess I feel like they've, they've met them, so I don't feel like I have a basis to deny what they're asking.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? All right, there being none, please, oh, did you have something? Okay, please go ahead.
Because I'm trying to understand, A, how we got here. B, if it meets a criteria, and it's been clearly stated that it met a criteria for approval, now we are going to deny it based on assumptions, or? Can you help me, yes?
Well, Commissioner Glassman articulated a basis from the code directly that his, the introduction of the resolution is based on the inability or the failure of the applicant to meet the particular criteria in A2 and 3. So that has specificity in that regard. We don't, you don't have to believe the applicant when they say that they've met that criteria. You don't have to believe staff as well, that you independently can make that finding. So in that regard, if there's a finding by a majority of you that that code section or those code sections have not been met, then there's a proper basis for denial.
So it goes back, back to what the mayor says. We, we as this buyer can just deny it regardless.
Well, you-
Because you're confusing me because you-
Of course, as you know, you-
Said in the beginning-
Yes.
That we shouldn't be here. Then you said that we, we can't deny it if it meets the criteria. Now I would deny it because we're saying that we believe it's not-
Right, if you make a finding that it doesn't meet the criteria, you can do that. Of course you can deny it. You can deny it whatever you want. It just becomes very diff-
I got that part.
It just gets very difficult if we get to court, if, if, again, if there's a clear finding that they've met the criteria, it's very difficult to walk into a court and say, okay, they've made the findings, but we denied it anyway, because then it's a lot harder to justify your denial. In this case, there's a specific reference to, again, if the majority prevails, that there are particular portions of the code that have not been met, and that's a basis for denial. That's adequate.
So if we deny it, they can go to court?
They-
And overturn it?
They, they certainly can, and again, I'm not speaking about all the other stuff we talked about, whether we should even be having this here. Putting that aside.
That's what I-
Right.
I guess, that's why I'm still sitting here, because of what you said.
Right, so I'm, I'm, I, I'm, my opinion stays the same in that regard. Look, presuming that we are supposed to be having a hearing, I'm just addressing the criteria that's necessary in order for you to say yeah or nay.
So you're saying this section that Commissioner Glassman just pointed out gives me a reason to deny it, and it will stand up in court? Is that what you're saying?
If you believe-
I don't believe in anything we're doing right now.
Well, I can't guarantee you what a court's going to do, but if you, you do have to articulate a basis for denial, and one has been articulated, whether the court agrees with that or not, who knows? I'd love to know, I'd love to be able to predict what courts do, but it's hard.
I, can I just, let me just see if I, I just want to, I think there's a little-
You going to help me?
I think there's a little misunderstanding. I just want to make sure I'm clear on it, too.
Okay.
I think what the city attorney is saying is, these various criteria upon which the application is being made, the applicant says, I, I meet these criteria. If the City Commission agrees that he meets the criteria and still overturns it, that could probably be reversed in a court. Okay.
I'm crystal clear with that part.
Okay, but if, but the applicant says that they've met this criteria, if we say, uh-uh, you didn't meet the criteria, okay, then we have a clearer basis upon which to survive a courtroom appeal.
Right, and remember, when we get to court, it's, it's not a de novo-type review. They look at competent substantial evidence. They look at essential requirements of the law and due process. So we've had due pro, again, putting aside the earlier arguments, presuming we're doing the hearing properly, you have procedural due process that's been afforded. You have competent substantial evidence that you have in your record and from staff and, and what's been presented by the applicant. And then you have the essential requirements of the law, which is essentially your code. But a three-judge panel-
We're just going to kick it and let the court say they met it.
Well, the court won't say that, because the court-
Because of what he just said.
He says the court's not going to look at the facts. They're just going to look at-
They're going to look at the facts.
Well, they, they do look to make sure that there's competent substantial evidence.
Right.
They're not going to do a, they don't say, they don't go in and say, well, were they right on this or that? They don't, they don't do a value judgment.
They're going to say they met, they met our criteria.
If you have facts that support your decision, and you followed your code, and you gave good due process, you should be fine. But again, three-judge panel, a lot can happen.
Did we follow our code tonight?
That's, that's difficult to answer. I, I couldn't make-
That's what we're deciding.
So you guys can shake your heads and do everything, but I got to make a decision based on what's in front of me. And I thought, I was at a de novo hearing, and I thought if it met a criteria, we could approve it. But now we're going to, to me, this seems like we're, we're going to deny it because we're the commission.
Well, as your attorney, all I can tell you what the law is. I can't, I can't make a deter, I can't apply the facts-
I think I need another attorney to-
Well, I can't-
Shield me when we go to court.
I can't apply the law and the facts together and give you a conclusion, because that's what your role is on a quasi judicial basis. I can't do that. I can tell you what the law is, but I can't come to that conclusion for you, you all.
Vice Mayor, what are you thinking down there? I just want to hear everything before, this is just, I feel like I'm in a pickle.
I think that this is a, that the yard setbacks here are excessive. And I think it challenges the, ultimately, for me, it's the third criteria that's the most concerning around urban scale with adjacent properties, and I think that's where the stretch is that I don't think it is an appropriate variance. I think it's excessive.
You think that the request is excessive?
I think the request is excessive.
I can agree with that, but, but, but we still have a criteria that would allow you to apply for this, this, this number, and if you meet it, you satisfy the requirement, and that's where I'm struggling, right?
So-
I agree with all these terminologies and analogies we use. I just, in my, in my core decision-making, I deal with facts and I deal with, you know, what I believe in terms of development and, and, and how I see things, but the applicant has, has, has met the criteria.
Okay.
According to what the attorney's saying, according to what staff is saying, according to what P and Z has stated, and now we're saying excessive doesn't meet the standard of the request of asking for something in addition to, to get around our code or around this perception of what we think is a small lot and shouldn't have this type of opportunity. So I, because of those facts, I don't have enough information to even participate in this, in this discussion, to be, to be honest with you. Because you're not telling me anything. You told me something in the beginning that kind of gave me hope. Now, it's like you just took my life raft from me. So you know what? You don't have that anymore. don't have that anymore, just, just drown. So, I don't know.
All right. So, um, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay.
I'm good to, good to vote.
So-
Yeah, and I, I just think-
I, I think we're ready to vote.
I think we all struggled on this too, just the continuity of urban scale, and just for me, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, the properties around it, not just the adjacent property, and when you look at the whole neighborhood, like we said, you have to look at everything that has been built and everything that has had a yard modification, so I think for me, the definition shows that they are following it because of what we've heard about the continuity of urban scale and the, all the properties around it, so, so it's just, it's just your opinion, do you think it does or doesn't, so?
My opinion?
Well, all of ours collectively, each person's just gonna have to make that decision, I guess. Do you, do you think they-
Sure, my opinion don't count.
So, can you help us understand before we vote what a yes vote means and what a no vote means? Because I think we're voting to deny, so just-
So, 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 all right, just to clarify-
Yeah, just, yeah, clarify.
So, to, to vote yes in favor of the resolution is to deny the project.
So yes equals deny the project.
Right.
That's my question.
Got it.
All right, uh, so let me just, let me just, um, uh, complete the discussion, uh, I think that the, uh, the application, uh, asked for an excessive yard modification. I, I believe that the district, uh, commissioner articulated it, uh, completely and well in that it fails to comply, uh, with the, uh, exceptions that are committed in order to ask for the yard modification. I do believe that, um, that these, the, the originally established standard of one-half the height, uh, is appropriate, and, and I don't believe that the criteria that are required to, to narrow that, that gap has been sufficiently met by the applicant. Let's just keep in mind a couple of things, you know, throughout this city, there have been numerous, uh, requests to narrow the yard setback from, um, from building to building and from, um, property line to building, and the reason why it has been granted in the past has, has really frustrated me when I, especially when I was a commissioner. Um, certain, certain neighborhoods like Bay Shore Drive along the intercoastal, um, downtown areas, a lot of places where, you know, we try to, we try to squeeze out a little bit more square footage on a building site because the developer wants to maximize their profit. I, I get it, but in the end, who, who suffers? The, the, the developer makes their money and moves on, and we probably never see them again, and, um, in the end, the community has to deal with the, um, the very conditions that are left behind because the buildings are so tightly squeezed together, and it kind of ruins what we're here in Florida to appreciate, which is the light, the air, the breeze, and the ability to, to visualize all that. You know, this same discussion came up at Bahia Mar years ago when they wanted to build all those buildings on Seabreeze Boulevard, and they were denying the community and visitors the right to, to go down Seabreeze and, and see what the water looks like in all the boats because they wanted to build those buildings, and thank God, this commission voted to change that site plan, and now we won't have those buildings. Let's just appreciate what Mother Nature has given to the people of Fort Lauderdale. It's a beautiful city, let's keep it that way, okay? I understand that Fort Lauderdale's become very popular, and we're trying to build more units, and we're trying to accommodate, uh, more and more influx of people migrating to Fort Lauderdale, but they're coming here because we've saved the city, we've saved the city from overdevelopment, and we need to continue to do that. And, thank you. And, and if we overdevelop it, we're gonna realize that we've kind of, we've kind of spoiled the very nest in which we've laid our eggs, and, and the point is that let's save Fort Lauderdale, and, um, so, uh, I'm gonna support the, uh, the resolution, uh, offered by the, uh, by the district commissioner, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, denying the issuance of a site plan level three development permit for the development of a seven multifamily residential units for the development known as Lumiere located at five hundred Hendricks Isle, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the residential multifamily mid-rise, medium-high density zoning district. Commissioner McKenzie?
I'm not supporting it.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
No.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Let's see if we can do better.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, moving on to, uh, PH one, public hearing approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-three Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan, uh, no one has signed up to speak, um, anyone have any questions? Do I have to move to close public hearing? No. Um, anyone have any questions? If not, someone like to-
Not by hearing, but nobody's signed up.
Someone like to, uh, move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and PH one is approved, PH two, public hearing amending the housing community development of twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty amended annual action plan for the community development block grant, uh, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, um, no one has signed up to speak, anyone wish, anyone comments? If not, um, someone like to, to, uh, is this a resolution or a, uh, a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Some moved.
Moved, second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, PH three, public hea, that was approved. PH three, public hearing and ordinance amending ordinance C twenty-one thirty-seven vacating right-of-way identified as a forty-foot wide by a hundred twenty-five-foot long portion of northeast fifth terrace between north, between north of northeast sixth street and south of northeast seventh street to revise conditions of approval, this is regarding Flagler Sixth LLC. Anyone he, um, well, Mr. Shine has agreed, uh, signed up to, uh, for questions only. Any other questions or comments? If not, would someone like to move the item?
Moved, second.
Please call the roll.
In ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-one dash, or C dash twenty-one dash thirty-seven of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating a portion of northeast fifth terrace forty-foot right-of-way lying west of lots thirty-two through thirty-six, block three, uh, three thirteen, and lying east of lots thirteen through seventeen, block three fourteen, Progresso, according to the plat thereof, as records in plat book two, page eighteen of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located north of northeast sixth street, south of northeast seventh street, east of northeast fifth avenue, and west of Federal Highway, all said lands situate lying and being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, to remove and replace exhibit B entitled Conditions of Approval, case number UPD dash B two-one zero-zero-one attached thereto incorporated therein. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Mr. Shine, you won some.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Last item on the agenda, OSR one, this is the second reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, a list of permitted conditional and accessory uses. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations, more specifically amending section forty-seven dash fourteen point ten entitled List of Permitted Conditional Uses and Accessory Uses, General Aviation District, and section forty-seven dash fourteen eleven entitled List of Permitted Conditional Uses and Accessory Uses in the Airport Industrial Park District of the ULDR to establish a process for the approval of uses that are not specifically listed in the list of permitted conditional uses and accessory use tables for each zoning district and will not adversely impact the operation of the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal, providing for correction of scrivener errors, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and that, uh, has now been approved on second reading. There's no further business of the commission regarding this, there's just, there's other business, but not regarding the, the meeting, correct?
Closed door, right? Yeah, there's, uh, OPEB-
Closed door, right.
Mayor, and also a shade meeting, and there's OPEB and a shade meeting.
Yeah, but that's not regarding this meeting.
No, um, but if I may, Mayor, uh, just wanted to, uh, provide you a reminder that the DC summit is on, uh, September nineteenth to twenty-first, and due to the summit, I wanted for the city commissioner to consider moving the September twentieth meeting to September twenty-second.
Is that a Thursday?
Yes.
Why don't we move it, you know what, if you're doing that-
I don't know if I can make it.
How about moving it to the nineteenth, which is Monday?
Does any of this interfere with any of the budget hearing requirements in those weeks?
No, it does not.
Thank you.
The reason why we moved it from the twentieth was because there's the, the, uh, the Chamber Summit to Washington, so we would decide, we thought we'd move it towards the end, but if we move it to Monday, would that, would that be okay with you, Commissioner?
No, I can, I can do Monday.
I can't do it then.
I'm sorry, you can't do Monday?
I can't do it Monday.
Can we just have the meeting on Tuesday? Who's not gonna be here?
Well, I won't be here.
Oh.
I'm going to the summit in Washington.
Vice Mayor.
Going to Washington.
Let, let him run the meeting for a while.
I beat you.
Get there first.
Well, we can carry on.
Yeah, I can, I can be here the twentieth, but whatever you want, Mayor.
I guess either way, one of us will be gone, so.
You can run the meeting, don't put any of your items on there.
You're, you're not gonna be here the nineteenth?
Correct.
And you're not gonna be here the twenty-second? Okay.
I can do the twenty-second.
I, I know.
I can do the twenty-second also.
September twenty-second?
That's what we're scheduled now, for the twenty-second, are we not?
No, we're scheduled-
Scheduled on the twentieth.
Yeah, my, my calendar says the twentieth.
Twentieth is what's scheduled.
Right, but I thought we had already moved it.
No.
No, not according to my calendar. But, that's okay, if we're gonna miss one of us, I will, I will allow, I will be missed.
All right, so we'll just do it-
I will excuse myself.
All right, we'll just do it on the twenty-second then.
Just tell everyone I'm not missing this on purpose, I'm not going to any event or something, you just, you changed it.
Okay, so we'll-
Twenty-second?
And I had to, therefore, I couldn't-
I could do Monday, or I could do Tuesday.
Can you do the twenty-second?
I could do nineteenth or twentieth.
You can do the twenty-second. All right, so let's just do it the nineteenth then.
I can't do the nineteenth.
I know, but I'm gonna miss two people on the twenty-second though.
Why don't you lighten the load, anything that you have, and let him run it, that-
Let's find a base that works.
The thing is, I'm not gonna be here for the meeting on the fourth.
Fourth?
The fourth of October.
Fourth of October?
Yeah, the fa, the next meeting, I'm not gonna be able to be here.
Do, we don't have a meeting on the fourth of October, we have a meeting on the eleventh. No, no.
October third.
Oh.
October fourth.
Wait, what's the first Tuesday in October, hello? No, I think we moved it to October.
My, my calendar's not updated, I'm, I'm shocked by-
No, the first meeting in October is on the first Tuesday of October.
I understand.
Okay. And I'm not gonna be here that week.
Sorry, that was my fault, normally-
Hey, city clerk, I don't think it's the fourth.
I believe we already moved it to October.
Yeah, we already moved it, it's the third.
Yeah.
You moved it to October third?
Yeah, I believe that there's a holiday October fourth, that's why it was-
All right, well, either day, I'm not, I'm not there the whole week.
It's like Rashid Shad or something, something close to-
How about we move the commission meeting to like, September twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh?
Yom Kippur, that's what it is.
Well, um, this is the thing, I, I plan to go to the, the boat show in Monaco-
Ugh.
Oh.
Weekend.
Maybe, maybe we'll, I'll go.
For the purpose of trying to get the folks there to come here for our boat show.
Oh, that's a good purpose.
Well, we all go over there.
I think we all go there. Governor did that, didn't he go to Israel and they all have a meeting? Let's do it.
So, so-
Kidding.
All right, let's go back to the nineteenth to the twenty-second. Um, pick a day, either the nineteenth or the twenty-second.
The nineteenth or the twenty-second.
McKenzie and I cannot make the twenty-second.
Ben, you can't make the twenty-second?
I can make the twenty-second.
So, you-
You can make the twenty-second?
No, you and I cannot make the twenty-second.
Commissioners McKenzie and Moritas can't make the twenty-second.
I can make the nineteenth, twentieth, or twenty-first.
Well, Ben, we'll make it, uh, we'll make it a light, uh, agenda on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Not fair, but, okay, go ahead.
Well, why don't you have it on the twentieth, and he just lightens his load?
Because then I'll miss two meetings in a row.
But that's an excuse, you're going to do business on behalf of-
No, no, I, I think I-